The Planning Commission meeting of February 6, 2019 will come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, recall the roll.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Mann?
Here.
Chairperson Hodge?
Here. I have a motion for approval of the agenda.
Chairperson Hodge, I would like to move the consent till after new business if that's possible.
Any objection? Without objection, the consent calendar will be moved until the last agenda item on the evening. Okay. Otherwise, any other changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, may we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Commissioner Castleberry has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mann. That will be the order of the minutes, of the agenda rather. Approval of minutes. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Motion is made by Commissioner Rice. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Castleberry. The minutes are approved. Okay, declaration of conflict. The secretary will read the declaration of conflict.
If any member of the Planning Commission may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time.
Are there any conflicts to declare? Seeing none, we'll move on. Public statements. This is the time allotted for public statements on comments on all items other than public hearing items. So you can speak now on whatever item you wish, but generally, we wish that you would hold any comments regarding the agenda items that we have this evening until those agenda items have been called. If you wish to speak on anything else, this is your opportunity to do so. Do we have any cards on this, on seven? Seeing no cards and seeing no one wishing to speak, we'll move forward. Correspondence. Are there any correspondence from the deputy director, city planner?
Yes, thank you Chairman Hodge. On the dais tonight and also on the table outside, staff has compiled much of the correspondence as it relates to the Item 11A1, that's the Kingdom Builders project. There's letters of correspondence expressing both support and opposition to the project and as well as some items that were just received prior to tonight's hearing. So this is again a summary of all the comments that have gone out since the public packet was distributed. And the Planning Commission packet accord is another, Planning Commission staff report is also additional correspondence that had been received previously.
Very good, thank you. There is no, we've deferred the consent calendar at this point. There is no continued business, public hearings. This is the time and place set for a public hearing on the consideration of GPA 92, ZS 712, TT 5916, PDS 1025, the project's mitigated negative declaration, and the mitigation monitoring plan. Are there any ex parte communications to report?
I met with resident Joe Scavo and to hear out his concerns and the concerns of neighbors on Valerie Avenue in the surrounding neighborhood regarding this project.
Any other ex parte communications?
I did, excuse me, I did receive a phone call and a voice message from Elaine Freeman. Did not return the phone call, no conversation.
Very good. May we have an ex parte, I'm sorry, may we have an oral report of the matter by staff?
Thank you Chairman Hodge. Senior Planner Sean Gibson will presenting the staff report tonight.
Good evening. The applicant Kingdom Builders LLC proposes to construct a 51-unit senior townhouse complex on a vacant 12.56 acre site at the northern terminus of Lemon Drive at Walnut Street, Presidio Drive. The project includes a general plan amendment, zone change, tentative tract map, and planned development permit. Tonight, the Planning Commission is being asked to make a recommendation to the City Council on these application requests. The project was first heard by the City Council on April 22, 2013, as a general plan amendment pre-screening request. At that meeting, the City Council authorized the applicant to proceed with the general plan amendment request to change the site to a moderate density residential land use to allow for a 51-unit senior development. Since that time, the applicant has worked through the city's application requirements and extensive site and architectural studies, which is culminating tonight. Of particular background, a large portion of the site is within the city's hillside performance standard area. This means that there are development restrictions associated with natural slope percentage and density to protect the hillsides and the impacts that go with it. But it also permits senior multifamily developments to build within these allowable slope areas. In this case, the request is for a for-sale townhome project, which is age-restricted to seniors 55 years and above. The overall site plan shown here, the units are dispersed within 16 duplex, triplex, and fourplex buildings. Within development of the site, the eastern terminus of Presidio Drive will be extended to Walnut Street. The leg of Walnut Street that curves downward towards Lemon Drive will be abandoned and Lemon Drive will become a full cul-de-sac. Before going further into the project layout, I will first discuss the general plan amendment, or GPA. The GPA changes the land use designation of the site from low-density residential to moderate-density residential on 8.9 acres of the site, and open space on the northwesterly 3.66 acres. This moderate-density land use allows for attached residential projects with a density range of 5.1 to 10 units per acre. The approximate density of this project is 7 units per acre. The open space land use area is also being created to establish a permanent open space area for the existing undevelopable 20% slope areas pursuant to the hillside performance standards and which would be maintained by the homeowners association. No units can be built on this portion of the site. The surrounding low and medium-density land uses are depicted here on this exhibit along with high-density land uses approximately 800 feet to the east near Walnut Street and Tappo Canyon, which includes 100 apartment units. The proposed zone change map would change the site's zoning designation from residential low-density conditional zoning, which is a minimum lot size of 1.13 acres per lot, to the residential moderate-density RMod, which is also 5.1 to 10 units per acre, and also a zone change to open space in the upper northwest corner. The RMod zoning is the lowest-density zone that allows for attached dwelling units. Also included in the request is a tentative tract map to create the 51 condominium units and the open space parcel shown here. Now for the planned development permit component, as discussed, the project is bisected by the new Presidio Drive connection here. 10 of the units will be located on the south side of the street, and 41 of the units will be located on the north side of the street. There are 27 single-story, one-bedroom units and 24 two-story, two-bedroom units. The north side of the project will have a single driveway entrance leading up to the access driveways leading to the parking areas and individual garages. The units will be connected by a series of walkways. Complex amenities include an infinity-edge swimming pool, spa, rose garden, barbecue area, courtyard and pool deck, and multi-purpose building with kitchenette. For the south portion of the project, there will be a single driveway from Presidio leading into the 10 units. The south side of the project includes a small pergola area amenity for small gatherings. The building design consists of Spanish admission design elements with two color schemes. Design elements include stucco walls, covered balconies with wrought iron railings, S-tile roofing, rafter tails, decorative tile vents, arches, recessed windows, and decorative shutters. This is the typical Spanish-style elevation shown here. Staff works closely with the applicant to ensure that design elements extend to all four sides of each building type, as the buildings can be viewed from multiple vantage points in the community. This is the typical mission design shown here. For the floor plans, both the one- and two-story plans include master bedrooms and bathrooms on the ground floor. Each have one or two patio areas with separate entries and a one- or two-car garage. The second floor of the two-story units include another full bedroom, bath, and loft area with some having balconies. To clarify, the staff report and the project exhibits, the site contains a total of 99 parking spaces. As shown on the screen, 51 spaces are required per the Simi Valley Municipal Code for senior developments. 75 of those spaces are within the private garages. There are 21 guest spaces on the north side of the development and three guest spaces on the south side of the development. The project will include a number of fences and walls throughout the site. Most notably is the verdura wall. This is a stacked block retaining wall that steps back into the proposed slope and has openings within it to allow for plant growth. The verdura wall locations are shown here along the north side of Presidio Drive. The high points of the verdura retaining wall is approximately 23 feet. This accounts for project grading as the northerly units will sit above the Presidio Drive to the north of the Presidio Drive. The applicant's representation of the wall is shown here. Adjacent to the top of the wall will be decorative iron fencing with the units beyond the fencing. Fencing adjacent to the Lemon Drive cul-de-sac completion is a six-foot-tall slipstone wall with wrought iron between pilasters. This provides security that will prohibit access to the project from Lemon Drive but provide a visibility through the project to soften the Lemon Drive streetscape. There's no pedestrian access proposed at this time. The conceptual landscape plan includes a variety of trees we planted throughout the project site and drought-tolerant plantings. Revegetation of the disturbed slope will occur with recommendations from the biology report and in compliance with state low-water use and fuel modification zone standards. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend the City Council approval of GPA 92, ZS 712, TT 5916, PDS 1025, and the mitigated negative declaration. Also, for clarification, there's two additional typos in the resolution which will be updated to reflect mitigation measure six. The correct wording is on page 22 of the staff report, and it's really the first sentence that should say within the year prior to initiation. That has been updated in the proposed resolution, and the correct wording is on page 22 versus the draft resolution, which will be updated should this project move forward. This concludes my presentation.
Questions to staff?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Rice?
Mr. Gibson, how long has the current owner owned the project? To the best of your knowledge, is it before 2013?
I would defer that to the owner.
Usually, when we talk moderate-density housing, it's usually provided as a buffer between low-density and other-density housing, and usually it's on the valley floor. This is not the valley floor. I'm just curious why we're...
The southerly portion is on the valley floor.
Okay.
This portion is.
Okay.
That's one example.
Okay, I didn't know if that counted as part of the valley floor or not. That's why, thank you.
Yeah, the hillside line comes into this general area here, so it's partially in the hillside as well.
All right. Let's see. And it's true that the 3.66 acres, I may be off by a point something acre there that are supposed to be, that in this would be labeled as open space, that basically, whether it's open space or not, nobody can build on it anyway because of hillside performance standards. Is that correct?
Yeah, that area is over a 20% slope area which precludes construction of dwelling units.
The other one is, which you know I'm going to complain about, how come there's so many crepe myrtles? I know that's really for the applicant, but there's like so many crepe myrtles on this property. I mean, I love the oak trees and everything, but there's so many crepe myrtles in there. It's like every house has its own.
My response to that is, for one, this project's been in the pipeline for a while.
Yeah.
This is a 2013 design with some updates.
Okay.
And it's also conceptual landscape plan, and the final tree palette can certainly change.
Okay. And questions about the traffic survey, but I would like to have those go later, if that's all right. That's it for the moment.
Other questions? Commissioner Mann?
No.
I have a couple quickies. Mr. Gibson, you made a comment, I just want some clarification, when you were talking about the hillside performance standards and you, I believe accurately commented that multifamily or attached dwelling for senior homes are allowed in the hillside performance standard areas. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. That's if they meet the, it doesn't mean they're automatically prevented, they, rather, allowed, they have to meet the density for the allowable zoning as it exists or as it's changed.
They have to meet the proposed density that's going forward.
Or the existing density, if that's what they're going, if that's what they are able to do.
If it's the existing density, yes.
Okay. Is there, I understand that the city says 51 parking spaces. I also know that, well, my primary question before that is, is do we, does the city, when looking at parking requirements for senior housing, distinguish between those that are 55 and older, 62 and older, or 65 and older? Or is it simply 55 and older, bingo?
It refers to, if the project's a senior citizen unit.
And that's deemed to be 55?
There's no age number in the code for parking.
Oh, I see.
Just refers to senior.
Okay. Then what is our, so what, is there nowhere a standard for what senior housing is? If the developer comes forward and says this is senior, and I think senior's 30, we wouldn't allow that.
The senior housing is defined by the state of California, and that's how we're referring to the 55 years of older for for-sale units and 62 if it was a rental apartment. So we're basing it off of that. So we've used the 55 senior parking requirement for the Wood Ranch senior condos as an example. They also got the one space per unit allowance.
I understand that, and this is really for everybody else, but that's one car, one car space, one parking space per unit, even if there's more than two, more than one apartment, I'm sorry. Jeez, I'll catch my wind here in a minute. Even if there's only one bedroom, if there's two bedrooms, it's still one car per unit.
Yes, that is correct, and several years ago, the City Council chose to provide the reduced parking standard for senior housing.
Now, I understand that the applicant is proposing 99 spaces, which is nearly double the 51 that's required, correct?
51 is required per the code.
And 99 are being proposed?
99 are proposed.
Okay. I don't, you know, somebody has a big party and there's, yeah, this is hypothetical, and I realize it might be a stretch, and I, you know, just bear with me. If it happens that there are more than 99 vehicles parked on the project, where does the overflow go? There's no street parking?
There...
On Presidio.
There...
Slash, I'm sorry, yes, on Presidio.
Right now, there are some no-parking signages posted. Those, that could always be reevaluated if the street's wide enough and it meets certain warrants. I could defer that question to the city's traffic engineer. Otherwise, parking would occur on public streets, the nearest available public streets.
Okay, and into the neighborhoods if those people could get there, if there was a way to walk to them or through them.
That's very possibility, just like any other large-scale activity.
The project, as it shows on the overall site, overall project site plan, you've got the units to the south of Presidio, then you have the units to the north Presidio. Most of the recreational amenities are in the northern section, correct?
Yes.
If someone were to walk over there and not drive over there, does, has there been any consideration as to whether or not there will be a marked, or will that be an unmarked crosswalk?
There's, there's issues with putting in a crosswalk as far as traffic, traffic safety, and as far as safety of that, the traffic engineers, which the applicant's traffic engineer should be here and as well as staff, could provide more professional opinions on crosswalks, mid-block, and things like that.
Okay. Is there, I didn't see it in the staff report, and I left mine on my desk at work, but, you know, I feel terrible. But is there, what's the distance between this curve on Presidio, this turn, and the location where persons would walk from the southern section to the northern section? To your knowledge, has there been analysis as to safety considerations for people driving the speed limit and lines of sight?
No, I did not prepare a distance measurement or safety analysis regarding crossing the street.
We'll sort of defer this then to the traffic engineer as something that we definitely want to, well, at least I would like to bring up.
Yeah, I would defer to them first.
Okay. Very good. That's all I have for the moment. Any other questions?
Commissioner Hodge?
Yes?
Just a couple more questions. According, Mr. Gibson, according to our packet here, that the nearest bus stop is Tappo Canyon and Township, can you tell me approximately how far that is? Just estimate.
It's, it, well, it's about a little over...
Yeah, that's, you're on Tappo Street, I think.
Back to the left.
Yeah, a little bit.
It's my new glasses.
There we go.
So that's about 3,300 feet.
Okay. And last thing I have is, this is in our packet, but just for the benefit of everyone else, do the fire department have any concerns about this project at all?
The fire department analyzed the interior driveways, and they required several fire truck turnarounds, both on the north-south side of the project, to account for their, both their backup standards and whether turnarounds required, and that did not require secondary access, that the turnarounds were sufficient.
Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on the fire department question. Any issue with respect to the length of the creation of the Lemon Drive cul-de-sac and whether or not it's a more than 800-foot cul-de-sac?
I don't have the specific answer to that in terms of a fire department question. Getting my bearings where we're at, well, since it's a cul-de-sac, you can do a turnaround, and the distance is about 691 feet.
Okay, so it's sub-800.
Yes, and even the side street in the county there is even less than 800.
Would it be fair to say that but for the closure of the current roadway that moves over towards Lemon, that the units on the southern side would not be built in that location?
Can you, can you rephrase that question?
Sure, sure. It seems to me, looking at the map, and I realize that I'm sort of trying to pretend overlays here, but if the roadway remained as it was, those units on the south side of what's being identified as Presidio could possibly be built on the north side and to the west of the other buildings. Would that be accurate or inaccurate?
It is, well, it is a complicated question. You would lose some frontage, buildable area if the existing roadway stayed where it was. If the Presidio Drive connection was omitted from the general plan, then you could gain some space, but you also have to look at the geotechnical soil studies to see where the buildable area is.
All right. Commissioner Mann?
Follow-up. In one of the maps, going on with your question about the line of sight, I think you said on Presidio, speed limit was 40 miles an hour, line of sight was like 440 feet, so whoever the traffic engineer that's going to be doing it, I'm just kind of curious as to, from a car traveling 40 miles an hour for a senior crossing the street, are they going to have time to stop with a line of sight of 440 feet traveling at 40 miles an hour? I don't want the seniors crossing Presidio playing a giant game of Frogger, trying to dodge the cars. So whoever the city traffic engineer is, that's an answer I'm looking for, is stopping time for a car at 40 miles an hour? Or distance for a car?
Sure, would you like to answer that question now, or bring the traffic engineer up, or how would you like to handle that?
Or do you want to hear from me after the public?
Yeah, we do have to public, I'll be fine with that.
Yeah.
Give him time to formulate an answer. Thank you.
All right. We will open the public testimony portion of the hearing. Would the applicant like to present the project?
Good evening. I am Mike Rovner. My wife and I, Janet, are the owners of Kingdom Builders, and we first of all would like to say thank you guys for hearing about our project, and also thank you to Mr. Peros and Mr. Gibson. They, I've been working with them through the whole project, and they have been great to work with as we bounced off things off each other to get this project to where we are today. I wanted to let you guys know, my background is, I am from Simi Valley. My wife and I are both from here. We have deep, deep commitments to this city. Someone asked a question is about the property, is that we bought it in 2004. My original plan was to build one house there, and I was going to run for city council. But our businesses got very busy, and we started a nonprofit, which we felt like met that need that we had in our lives. We both love this city. My life was radically changed for the better in this city, locally in this city. We have deep, deep connections to this city with several churches in this community. In fact, my company built New Beginnings Church, which is in District 3 on Sycamore and Alamo in 2005. We're connected to the Crisis Pregnancy Center and very connected to the Samaritan Center. My experience as, my trade is I am a general contractor and a developer. Our company specializes in multifamily, and we've built several projects that are award-winning projects, not even, not only on the local level and the state level, but also we have won awards for our projects on the national level for multifamily. And I want to tell you guys, if you do approve this, I will build it, and it will be beautiful, and it will meet a beautiful need for the city. The project was kind of born in 2012. As, you know, I realized that we weren't going to build, we weren't going to build on it a single family. And so I met with then the, before Mr. Gibson, it was Paul Drury, if some of you guys remember him, and like the guys that are here, a brilliant guy, and I was just talking to him, and I was like, I have this piece of land, and I'm looking to do something on this piece of land that will add value to the city, and it's something, what does the city actually need? And he actually told me, he said, Mike, if I was you, I would consider age-restricted townhomes. There's none of it in the city, and there's a lot of people looking to downsize. And so he goes, why don't you go back and do your research and come back and talk to me? And that's really how the project was born, and there is a great need in the city for age-restricted townhomes. And so there's a lot of people in the city that are wanting to downsize and move to this, move to this type of project. There's people that live in the city that want their parents to live in the city, and there's really nothing else like this. There's nothing else, brand-new, for-sale, like this in the city, and we think it has a great need for our city. It's not a huge project, it's 51 units, and I wanted to make that totally clear. Like you guys know, there are limited options in the city for seniors. Like you guys know, there are limited options in the city for, for seniors. We're going to have great amenities here, we're going to provide a lifestyle. My mother, who's here today, lives in a, a age-restricted townhomes in Thousand Oaks and it doesn't have the amenities, even in a bigger building that our project's going to have here. We're going to have walkways, we're going to have an infinity pool, we're going to have a community room where we're going to teach, have, where they'll teach yoga classes and have other meetings in that room. Its close proximity to the senior center, strip malls, Kaiser, the Simi Valley Hospital and other medical office, we feel makes it a great location for this property. It's a great option for, for an area that has, it has limited options in the city for seniors. We think it's a great opportunity and we think it'll add a lot of value to people. My wife and I, we've been working on this project for, since 2013 and we've toured a lot of properties. The one we liked the most was Stony Brook and Westlake and we were trying to bring Stony Brook from Westlake to Simi Valley. And so a little bit about the process, we, we started in 2013, actually started in 2012, but actually started the process in 2013. And as I was working on this, we found out, which will probably be talked about tonight, is that it is in the earthquake fault zone. And I actually, when I bought the property, didn't know that, but then I found out and I was like, whoops, we have this project and this property. And so I'll just be honest with you guys, I mean, like, we didn't know exactly what to do and, you know, just to be totally transparent, my wife and I, we prayed that this land would have no earthquake faults, but the city didn't believe us. So we started working with a geo soils guy and we started digging trenches on the property. And we dug nineteen trenches and we're talking about thirty feet deep and sixty foot long and we also did boring, borings throughout the property. And so we end up having to hire a soil scientist and he came out and said there was no earthquake faults on the property. Then after that, the city said, we're still not a hundred percent sure, so we had to hire, the one faulting scientist in the state came out. And finally, after three years of doing earthquake studies on the property, the city finally said, we got the stamp that there were no earthquake faults on this property. So my wife and I, we call this our miracle land and we want to, we want to build it, we want to make it beautiful for the city, we want to make it beautiful for every single person that lives there. Our team is local, Gons Pedrosa, who's our architect, Elaine Freeman is our city consultant and, and myself, and we're local people. And I'd like to now introduce my architect, Gons, and he's going to get up and show you more about the project. But thank you guys very much for considering it.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Gonzalo Pedrosa with GP Architecture and I'm the architect for the Walnut Hill Senior Village. I would like to take a moment to thank staff for their guidance and input. Together we have created a very well-designed project that is sensitive to its surroundings and will provide the city with much-needed housing, especially for over fifty-five population. Located north of Walnut Avenue between Lemon Drive and Tappo Canyon Road, this fifty-one unit townhouse project will provide one- and two-bedroom plus loft housing opportunities. The site, as said, is twelve, about twelve and a half acres and we're preserving about three-point-seven acres as open space. The project runs east to west along Walnut Street. The positioning of the buildings on the site was well-thought-out, orienting the buildings north to south with the short elevation perpendicular to the street in order to maintain the privacy of the neighboring residences to the south as much as possible. We incorporated courtyard entries into most of the units and provided amenities for the residents in common areas. As been discussed, the, the city requirements basically calculate out to fifty-one covered stalls with no guest parking. We've provided seventy-five covered stalls and an additional twenty-four guest parking stalls, about ninety-four percent more parking than the minimum requirement. As I mentioned, the village will have one- and two-bedroom units. All first floors will have a master suite and be fully adaptable to provide accessibility with accessible kitchen, laundry and bathrooms. This is a typical one-unit, one-bedroom unit that includes a study and direct access from the garage. This is a typical two-bedroom plus loft unit, again with full master bedroom suite at the ground level and accessible kitchen, laundry and bathrooms. The second floor has been a full, the second floor has a bedroom, a full bath and a spacious loft. The extra bedroom can be used as a guest room, caregiver's room, or when your partner snores a little bit too much, you can go up there and get a good night's rest. The units range from thirteen-hundred-plus square feet for one bedrooms to eighteen-hundred square, plus square feet for the two bedrooms. We provide well-designed spaces that will promote quality living for a senior community. We are proposing two main styles of architecture for the buildings, one being of a Spanish motif and the second one, a mission style of architecture. We felt that these two styles complement each other since Spanish colonial architecture shares some elements with the earlier mission style derived from the architecture of California missions. Contextually, we felt that these styles were compatible with recent properties in Simi Valley and provided a timeless design that is familiar and comfortable for both future residents and the community. The Spanish-style building is well-appointed with design elements that include white stucco exterior, arcade and balcony features, gable roof elements, recessed windows and curved openings. Additional features include doorways accented with tile, wrought iron fencing at balconies, estile terracotta color roofing and gable vent accents. We also incorporated drought-tolerant landscaping throughout the project. The mission elevation is characterized by earth-toned stucco exterior, overhanging eaves with stucco-finished exposed rafter tails, shed and hip, shed and hip roof elements, window shutter accents, square columns with arched accents at openings, cantilevered balcony, again estile terracotta color roofing and low-pitched sloped roofs. The design and massing of the buildings were also well-thought-out incorporating one-story elements at the ends of the buildings, then stepping up to the two-story elements at the middle for pedestrian-friendly feel and less imposing massing along Presidio. One of the elements we are very proud of are the community amenities. They include an infinity pool, spa, gardens and walking paths. Comfortable outdoor lounging areas, outdoor fireplaces, pergola and barbecues. These images are other views of the main common area showing pools, spa and seating areas. Next to the pool is a multipurpose building that will have seating areas, a kitchen, TVs and flex space that can be used for group exercise and other events adding to the quality of living in the village. This is a sampling of the interiors of the units showing ample spaces. The units will include energy-efficient features like dual-glaze low-E windows, Energy Star appliances, cool roofs and will be constructed solar-ready. I'm going to run a quick little video that'll kind of give a feel for the overall project. This slide kind of shows the three-dimensional articulation, how the building stepped back from the street. This is a verdure wall, that's going to be along Presidio and the tree line should also aid in softening the wall element. Again, as we come up driveway A, you can see how the buildings are well-defined, four-sided architecture and have three-dimensional articulation and the massing. This is an example of one of the courtyard areas where we have the walking paths and it just provides opportunity for people to get together and talk and our infinity pool. And the multipurpose room, which again will have, it'll be kind of a flex space where you can have different events from these exercise classes to a birthday party, things like that. The interior units are very spacious. And here we have our stairway leading up to the second floor loft and bedroom. And this is the guest bedroom overlooking that exterior balcony above. Thank you for the opportunity to share Walnut Streets Senior Village. We're very excited about this project and we believe that it will not only provide much-needed housing for the community, but will also be an asset to the city. We have our design team present, including Civil Soils Traffic Engineers and our planning consultants, Elaine Freeman and Samantha Kim. We are available for any questions. And that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Pedrosa, before you, before you sit down, would you mind asking a couple of quick questions?
Sure.
Thank you for the video. Do you have any video that shows the location and the appearances of the retaining walls? I understand that some of the walls go as high as twenty-three feet.
We have...
Where is that and what's it look like?
This is an updated image. Again, these are artistic renderings, but this is Presidio looking towards the west and you can see the verdure wall. And the idea is basically to use the landscaping, the, the tree line, as well as this vegetated wall to provide a green, attractive retaining wall element.
How many years is that projected at? Twenty? Fifteen? I mean, let's be, let's be serious.
It's, it's an artistic rendering and if I, I told you the truth, as far as what it takes to convey the information to the rendering consultant for them to do that, it's sometimes lost in translation. That, that is probably, yeah, ten, fifteen-year lifespan.
Okay. I didn't mean to be clear, but I am, I would like to be precise about this. Is, this is looking west from the easternmost portion of the project?
Uh, yes.
All right. So at this particular point right here, what is the approximate height of the landscaped wall?
I, I believe at this end, it's about eighteen feet and I think I have another image right here. This is the corner as we drive up to, to drive A. I believe that's about twenty-three feet. I think that's the highest point.
Okay. Now, a person who's walking from the southern side, I guess, I guess they'd have to drive. I mean, if they're walking from the southern side and crossing Presidio and hoping to go into the recreation area, I mean, they're going to have to walk...
I think frankly, they'd have to drive. Yeah. It's not, it's not, I don't think it's really meant, those folks that would be maybe interested in that lower area would want to maybe have a more smaller type community, that maybe they wouldn't be that into, it is for purchase, so maybe that wouldn't be that into the, the community area, but it, they would have to drive, it wouldn't be something where, you know, there's a sidewalk and, and a walking...
There's an agenda item on the agenda that we mistakenly, I mistakenly passed over, where we were going to be discussing SCAG, the Southern California Association of Government's Requirements for Various Housing and what our standard is on that. And one of the things that they ask is, you know, how many homes have we built over moderate income? What do you anticipate these units to go for? Are they going to fit into the moderate income level or is it going to be above moderate?
I honestly don't know the answer to that question.
I would say it's going to...
Come to the, come to the podium, please.
We believe that it'll be in the more, the moderate, in the more moderate range. I mean, they're not going to be, they're not going to be in the upper end.
Do you, do you have an estimated price point? Guesstimated price point?
Five-hundred.
All right. Five-hundred is over moderate, four-fifty is moderate.
Okay.
If I read that staff report correctly, but that's fine. And thank you for sharing, I appreciate that. Okay, thank you very much.
Can I?
Commissioner Rice?
Since you're up here, could you very briefly kind of describe the street improvements that you're being asked to make if, if we approve this project? I.e. the lights, the, the striping, the curbs, that sort of stuff?
Go back to the front here, I'm going to take you to the site plan. So the street improvements call for a meandering sidewalk that runs along the north side of Presidio and it will have drought-tolerant landscaping and then the, the tree line and the verdure wall that, that will then transition up to the, the pad level of construction. On the southern side, it will have, as you can see right here, quite a bit of landscaping that will be incorporated. This portion of the project is not part of Mike's property, so, you know, Presidio going in, that will sort of drive how that gets configured there.
I'm going to ask a question, which I think I'm going to have to go back to the applicant to answer this one. One of the conditions is condition A-21, usually we've talked about this at the end, but condition A-21 states that, and this is a standard thing for a, a senior home, that grab bars and rails are put in at least one bathroom per unit. If we were to approve this project, would you also commit to having at least a raised toilet in those same bathrooms, one with a sixteen-inch or higher from floor? Because I know that that's a big deal for, you know, people who may have...
Do we have that now?
We don't have that now, we don't have that specifically called out, but if it's some, something that's concerned...
Well, I, I just think that if you're going to do senior homes and...
Well, they have, they do have grab, obviously they do have grab...
Average toilets are fourteen, fifteen inches and...
Yeah, they do have grab bars and I...
Yeah, they will be accessible units and we have the clearances, we're going to have the, the backing for grab bars and things like that.
But besides the grab bars, just having the higher toilet can...
You know, I, I...
It would be an ADA compliant toilet, if that's your ques, if that's your question.
I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Yeah, yeah, it will be an ADA compliant toilet.
All right.
Yeah, the units are completely ADA, ADA because we're, we're figuring at some point, I mean, you know, my mom's seventy-five, she gets around pretty good right now, but at some point, you know? And we're expecting people from, you know, fifty-five, sixty to eighty or older will live here. And so that's our expectation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and I, last thing, I appreciate you teaching me a new occupation, the faulting scientist, so I'm, thank you.
Yeah, well, I actually, I actually know more about faulting studies and earthquake zones than any person should ever need to know after four years of, of going through it.
Any other questions? Commissioner Casselberry?
Yes, I have one quick question. So I know we have new solar mandates coming for single-family housing and it's, there doesn't appear to be any solar for this project. What kind of green building elements do you have for this development?
We're, we're going to have low-E, we have tankless water heaters, low-E windows. The, the units will be solar-ready. There's, it's not called out to have solar panels at the moment, but the units will be solar-ready. So it'll have the state-of-the-art energy efficiency.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question.
Commissioner Rice? I'm sorry, ma'am?
That's okay. Tough day I was, evidently.
That's true.
So am I correct in stating, so you're saying there's no fault line in or near the project?
I, we have our, we have our soils engineer here now and he'll be able to answer any questions for you specifically, but I will tell you that we've done all the studies, literally through two city consultants and that they have all seen every single trench and looked at every boring and have completely approved it, there are no active faults on the property.
Because you realize in, in all the maps and stuff you gave us, there's clear definition of, or clear lines that say fault line in, in all the maps you gave us.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have our soils engineer.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Rudy Roberti, Principal Geologist with GeoSoils Consultants, and we completed the geotechnical and geologic study on the site. And just to clarify Mr. Rovner's comments, there are no active faults underneath any of the proposed buildings. There is a setback zone that we established along a fault that we could not prove to be inactive. Since the site is located within a special study zone, we have to determine... Since the site is located within a special study zone, we have to determine, you know, the whole purpose of special study zones is to prevent the construction of a habitable structure across a trace of an active fault. An active fault is designed as what, or defined as one that has experienced ground rupture in the last 11,000 years. Through the extensive trenching program that we performed, we did encounter one fault on the site that we could not prove to be inactive. So we set back from that fault. And all of that work was observed and approved by the city's consultants as well.
What was the setback roughly on whichever building was closest to it?
Approximately about 20 feet on either side of the fault, or actually more than that. The setback zone itself is approximately 50 feet wide.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I have a number of cards of persons who have indicated their interest in speaking or an interest in expressing if they're for or against a project but do not wish to speak. I've asked that they be shuffled, so I don't, it's not gonna be a whole bunch of people who are for and then all those people who are against. And you're going to have three minutes to speak. I would encourage you to use your three minutes in any way you wish to do. If you wish to repeat what the person said in front of you, that's your call. Sometimes persons will say at these meetings, you know, don't repeat what other people have said, we've already heard it. Frankly, as far as I'm concerned, the other commissioners may not agree, maybe they do, if 29 people all are concerned about one thing, to me, that's important to know. So if a person says something that you really want to say and they've already said it in front of you, go ahead, tell us again what you think and why you think that. I would request that, I understand that this could be an opportunity for people to support strongly or be strongly opposed to a particular project, that's fine. But I would request that you refer, reserve that statement while you're at the podium and not to cheer for people or hiss people or whatever. Just, you know, allow us, keep quiet while you're sitting there so we can hear what the persons are saying and so that they have the best opportunity to say what it is that they wish to say. And you express yourselves at the podium. If you could do that, we'd really appreciate it. Okay. First card I have is for Mike Bernard. Does, any wishes to speak? Mr. Bernard or Bernardi?
First of all, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to let me speak. I live on Faxton Court and this project is right behind me. And I asked the last meeting that we had, the soils engineer, how deep he went. He told me he went 90 feet. I've never seen a rig back there that's gone down 90 feet on the soil samples, so I'd definitely like to see that. There is two faults running behind my house and my neighbor's house. And when we had the earthquake in '94, I was there, had a friend at Caltech and the earthquake here was bigger than it was in Northridge. So that being said, I made a list, but then some other things came up. There's one thing about the traffic. The lane's approximately about 16 feet wide and it opens up to a real big lane. And on the previous meeting, they said it was about 64 feet was gonna be the width of Presidio. That's basically the same thing as Alamo going down from Tappo Canyon, going all the way down as far as you want to go to the hospitals and so forth. I've had about nine cars wreck in the back part of my property. Two of them been around telephone poles. And with the speed of this, that this is gonna create, it's gonna create a major nightmare, especially for the elderly people. That's a long stretch to try to go across. All right, I will go down the, just a couple of statements I had. This proposal of the block wall being 20 feet, 23 feet high, then you've got a two-story house, which with 412 pitch roof, it's another 21 feet. I sit down about five feet below Walnut Street. Okay, so I mean, you're talking about 50 feet below this house, this project. If we have an earthquake and those faults kick in, we've got gas lines, we've got this major pool, we've got water, where's all this debris coming? It's coming down on us, because it's all gonna come downhill. So I have a major concern there. I'm looking through the, some of the comments I have. You know, the Spanish style, as far as, you know, building that in this particular area, it doesn't fit with the decor that's there, it's been built back in '64. And then they talk about, you know, the railings and this and that, that's not the style that we have there now. Then they're talking about they want to downsize these homes, 1,300 for a single story, 1,800 for, I mean, for a two-bedroom, 1,300 for a one-bedroom. My house is 2,100, so how is that downsizing? Most of the houses around me are about between 17 and 1,900. So you're saying downsizing? It's not downsizing. The elderly still can have a problem getting around, especially on a two-story. I guess part of it's already been answered, I'm not gonna get into a lot of the deep portions, but I object on this being built, especially being on a hill and coming down with the two faults running through there. And there's been no substantial documentation that I have seen that they have drilled down 90 feet. I've watched them do things, I've watched them come dump stuff in the back and so forth. So that being said, I'll let some other people add to it from there. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, for those of you who haven't been here before, you'll see, thank you, you'll see a green light and then a yellow light comes on when there's 30 seconds to go, just to let you know that you have 30 seconds. And when the red light starts blinking, it's not like the Oscars, we're not gonna start playing music, but we would ask you to sort of wrap things up at that point. Judy Pepio?
With the exception of Commissioner Cassiberry, I think you all know that I'm the Housing Liaison, Appointed Housing Liaison for the Council on Aging. And I'm here to do my due diligence in keeping you informed as to what our needs are. The Council on Aging's mission statement includes the fact that it is a appointed and advisory body elected by senior citizens and appointed by the City Council. And our mission is to identify the needs of seniors in this community. It doesn't say low-income seniors, it doesn't say what kind of seniors, so we are here to represent the needs of all seniors. The Council on Aging serves as an advocate to support seniors with maximum independence, safety, and quality of life. I have one handout, because what I'd like to take my three minutes for is to put a face on the type of housing that we now have on the ground that is like, somewhat like this. We only have three complexes. The sheet that she's passing out is a page out of the Senior Housing Guide that's on your website. It's also the number-one brochure that is handed out at the senior center. It includes apartments and for sale. This is our for-sale page. I'd like to start at the bottom, because these are not in order of age. Casa Flores is our oldest development. It was built starting in the year 2000. 103 semi-attached homes. Most, all of them are two-bedroom, excuse me, are two-story and, as you can see, they have between one, two, and three bedrooms. There's only one stretch along Daisy Street that is single-story. There might be a couple others, but I don't think there's more than 15 one-story units in there. They don't have any amenities except for a pool and a bathroom and a little park area with benches. But it's sold out all the time. I've added in red that in the entire year, up to December the 21st, only nine units sold, and I've given you some prices, so you can see what those old units are selling, simply because it's the lifestyle that they want in being with their own secluded people. Average days on the market, only 41 days. And two of the homes sold at over-listed price. The next one that was built is up at the top, the Wood Ranch condos. Those are stacked flats of 58 units. They do not have a lot of amenities either. You can see that only four units sold in the year, and I've given you the prices. The low price there was a one-bedroom, one-bath, and I'm assuming it was one of the affordable units. It wasn't on my information. Paseo de las Flores is the newest to date. It is townhomes and nicer than the others as far as amenities, but no amenities anything like this project is. So I would like you to keep this into consideration. You have a lot of letters for, you have a lot of correspondence against, and I know these projects do bring issues, but I'm gonna trust you to try to work through them and bring this project to us. We really need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Luker?
Just wanna say, I do live in Simi Valley, but I do not live in this neighborhood. I do not know anybody that lives in this neighborhood. But I did attend the Neighborhood Council for District III last month, and the majority of the people who do live in this neighborhood that showed up were against this project, and I can understand why. They've earned their money, they've saved their money, and they bought their homes because they wanted to live in low-density zone. That was the deal they made with the city. We'll buy here, we'll pay our taxes, and we'll live in a low-density zone. I also asked the project manager at that time how long this construction would take, and he said it would be over a year. That's a year, earth movers, cement trucks, construction material deliveries, saws, hammers, nails. That's an awful lot to ask in existing community here in Simi Valley. I don't think it's fair. For lack of a better analogy, they're asking to change the rules after the game has started, and I'm opposed to this. Thank you.
Emily Walker? Ms. Walker? Here. Oh, very good.
You have copies of my letter, correct? Okay, thank you.
By the way, before you speak, Ms. Pepio, since you gave this to the commissioners, do you have a copy that you could stick out on the, or have somebody put out there for you so that anybody who wants to see what we're looking at can see it?
On the table outside?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's nice if everybody knows what we know or has access to it. Thank you. Ma'am, go ahead.
Before I begin, I have a number of petitions-
Can you speak into the microphone, please, so the folks at home can hear you?
Before I begin, I have a number of petitions signed by people opposing the project, which I will give to you. In addition, I have letters signed by people authorizing me to speak in their behalf. Should I give those to you now?
If, that'd be fine.
Okay.
And we'll put a copy out there on the table as well.
Now I will begin my presentation. There are many reasons why the proposed Walnut Hill Senior Village is not a good plan and not in the best interest of those living in the area. Some reasons are as follows. The proposed development is not compatible with the single-family homes that now are in the area and the low-density zoning of the surrounding area. Residents of the area cherish their rural, semi-rural quality of life here, and the proposed development would destroy the special country atmosphere. Although the proposed zone change is for moderate density, which is too much, the proposed development is really high-density. Traffic on Walnut, Presidio, and all adjoining streets would be dramatically increased to the detriment of the present residents of the neighborhood. An earthquake fault goes through the middle of this proposed development. Clear evidence of recent activity on the fault line, on this fault line, can be seen on adjoining properties. Also, the eastern reservoir site on Ditch Road and Presidio had been purchased, but the owner could not develop it because of the earthquake fault, and the city bought the property back from the individual. At present, many of the units have two stories. Most seniors have difficulty climbing stairs, so these units would not be good for seniors. A 23-foot retaining wall would be a blight on the neighborhood and a possible hazard in the event of an earthquake for properties south of the development. The development is immediately adjacent to a wildfire area over which the residents will have no control. The plan provides limited access for fire control and very limited means of evacuation in the event of an emergency. Some units in the proposed development have one parking space. Only some units have two parking spaces. It is very likely that two or more spaces per unit will be required for home assistance personnel, caregiver, grocery-delivery person, other home health care workers, visitors, et cetera. Headlights on vehicles entering on driveways will disturb neighbors to the south. Placing a swimming pool almost immediately over a fault line creates a hazard to the development and to the neighborhood to the south. There is no logical reason to close Lemon Drive and make it a cul-de-sac. Some on Lemon and Walnut are getting free land and having their street turned into a cul-de-sac and are in favor of the proposed development. Indeed, who would not want free land and having a street turned into a cul-de-sac? Some of the letters from people in support of the project do not live in the area. Example, Tappo Canyon Road, et cetera. There are other senior condo townhouses in Simi, and there are several in the planning stations. Often, senior housing projects are changed to apartments, other types of rentals, low-income housing, et cetera. For example, Parkside, originally planned for 55-plus and became rentals. Major opposition to the proposed Walnut Hill Senior Village was expressed at the developer's initial presentation meeting a few years ago and again at the developer's December 2018 presentation meeting.
Are you, I'm sorry, Ms. Walker, are you just about able to wrap it up or?
Yes. In addition, major opposition to the proposed development was expressed at the January 2019 Neighborhood Council meeting. Residents of the neighborhood have moved here to experience a quality of life that Simi Valley offers. Their concerns need to be given priority over a proposed new development. We believe that the overwhelming majority of people living in this area oppose this type of development. We earnestly request that the city reject this plan and retain the property as low-density.
Thank you, ma'am. Mark Whaling?
Sit down, sir.
Oh, yes, it says in support of the project, does not wish to speak. Mary Earl?
I oppose the project. I oppose changing the zoning from low-density to moderate-density. I oppose terminating Lemon Drive and making it a cul-de-sac. It will create more traffic for the side streets. It is not in the general plan, as we have been told. If it was in the general plan, the builder wouldn't need to ask for an amendment to add it to the general plan. The project is not compatible with the surrounding area. The quality of life for the neighbors already in the area will be changed for the worse. Property values for houses in the area will decrease. If a current owner wishes to sell their house, I don't think anyone will buy it. Parking will be an issue. Only 29 uncovered parking spaces. By law, some of the 29 spaces will be designated handicap. Where will visitors and service vehicles park? The proposed project is in the fire zone. Some of the units will be two stories. Most seniors have difficulty climbing stairs. The city's concern for senior housing is confusing. There are 667 senior units already built or in the process of being built in Simi. Most of the residents in the area oppose the project. Residents moved here for the quality of life the area offers. Our wishes need to be given priority over proposed new development. Thank you.
Thank you. Then after Mr. Harris would be Don Gray.
I live in Lemon Heights. I've lived in that house for, this is my 39th year. And Presidio Drive, where it stops now, is not a problem. The problem is when, if the builder puts Walnut through to Presidio Drive, the information that the builder supplied was strictly what the impact was going to be based on the people in their project. But what's gonna happen is people from Tappo Canyon are gonna find a non-stop thoroughfare going right through our bedroom neighborhood that is unacceptable. I've gone and looked in other neighborhoods and the newer housing projects, and where there are thoroughfares, there is a lot of room on both sides of the road, a protective area between them and the houses. When you go down Presidio, pass- When you go down Presidio past where I live in Lemon Heights, there is no room like that. There's going to be a lot of loud, noisy traffic, where kids are playing, and where people in all of those neighborhoods are going to be bothered by the traffic. So, yep, let me think about this. When, about five years after I moved into the house, somebody had told me that it was years before that was in the city's plan to put Presidio through, but the area has changed since that plan was originally written, and it doesn't fit what's in the area now. So, not only do I oppose the project because I think it should be low-density, but I certainly oppose putting Presidio all the way through because you're going to create a traffic nightmare for a bedroom community that doesn't deserve it. Okay? Thank you.
Don Gray, and following Don Gray will be Joy Lomenick.
Construction always seems to be an issue in Simi Valley, is that nobody ever wants it in their backyard. I've got two homes across the street from me right now that are under construction, and I felt the same way as a lot of these people that are speaking tonight. I did not want to have to go through construction. However, the times that we've had issues, the city planning has been excellent, or at least the permitting area has been exceptional at helping to make sure that if we had a complaint, that it was resolved and that the construction was having to be dealt with in the hours in which the city allows. I also live in an HOA, which means we have even more stricter laws in regards to construction. However, we are in desperate need of senior housing. And my mother-in-law lives in a community right now that's probably about the same size, maybe a little bit larger, and she always thought that it was going to be more of a senior solution. However, she's got a lot of people that have moved in lately that are now renting, and, or they've purchased, and they've got a lot of children. And so she's really wanting to make sure that there's some place that there is for seniors, that you can have a place that's quiet. That's the one thing that I think that is really important here, is that it's going to be an improvement to the community by having a senior center or senior living versus having condominiums or these townhouses that would be open to families. For traffic reasons, seniors typically don't have the same schedules as regular workers, so I don't see that that's going to be a big issue, is having a bunch of traffic during those hours. I mean, you've got maybe 10 years of people between 55 and 65, maybe those that are working at other hours. It seems also as though the headlight issue has been an issue that's been brought up, and if these houses are much higher than the houses below, again, it doesn't seem like it should be an issue. I've driven down that street, and it's very, very difficult even to get to 25 miles an hour. I understand that if straightening out that street and making it so that it is a different situation could be a potential problem, but we have that problem throughout Simi Valley. It's not just a unique situation to one community. It is a problem that we have throughout. I live in an area that people use my street as a thoroughfare to get away from the streets behind me that have parked cars. So it is an issue that's across the city, not just for one particular area. I believe that this is a beautiful construction. It is absolutely gorgeous, and by the time it's finished, I'll be able to possibly purchase myself and move in, because I think it's really important that we have more senior housing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Joy Lomenick, and next will be Bill Lomenick. That's amazing, because we did shuffle these, and you guys came up together again.
I'm wounded. I have pictures of earthquake fault damage. I was one of the realtors that sold the houses in Lemon Heights. I asked the builder at the time why he didn't buy the property on Walnut also. He said that property would cost way too much to develop, to build homes on, that they would either be way too expensive, or they would have to be crammed in there to make any money off of it. The situation was that the area was not conducive or zoned for anything but low-density, and that it was not cost-effective. The same situation still exists. This contractor can only make money if he crams houses in this area, and it will lower property values, as this is not a multifamily neighborhood. This is not an area of medium to high-density. It is zoned for agriculture and low-density. These condos will sit on a 23-foot-high retaining wall on a steep hill. There are two-story, they are two stories tall, which makes it like having a four-story condo in a mainly one-story neighborhood. This is not preserving the hills of Simi or the existing code of low-density. This will make it so that condos can look down into everyone's front and backyards, and there will be no privacy whatsoever. The quality of life is going to be extremely affected, plus there are no amenities nearby, like grocery stores, gas stations, et cetera. And the open space here will be closed off. Not only is this a low-density area on a steep hill, there is a fault line that runs under it. In 1994, we personally had $140,000 in structural damage to our house. We had to hire a freeway crew to come in and hold up the front of it while they fixed it. It took a year and a half to get it back into shape. It twisted the whole house. In April 2018, there was another earthquake registering 5.7 off the Channel Island coast, and it caused a five-foot crack in my living-room wall. There is obvious movement on the fault line by the pictures that I just provided you. Building next to it is dangerous. The contractor hired a geologist who said there are many fault lines running through this property, but he was really concerned with one running through said property in question. The property next door cannot be built on, as a lawsuit was brought up before Simi, and Simi lost. The guy who had purchased the property got it back. That is why there is no building on the field right next door. The contractor claims that the fault lines, first, there was no fault line, then his second claim was, "Well, it ends at my property," which is absolutely ridiculous, because I have the pictures to prove that there is movement on that line. They've talked about the, am I red?
Well, you are. If you could, pick your best next argument, and then we'll bring up the mister.
Okay. I've lived there for 39 years. I'm an original homeowner. There are at least five other people that I know of that are still originally there also, and we moved there for low-density and the quiet country style. By adding all these other houses, 51 is not conducive to the area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize for assuming that Mr. Lomenick, Bill Lomenick is your husband. I have no idea who he is. Bill Lomenick?
I claim him.
Okay. After Bill Lomenick will be Pat Merchant. Three minutes.
I've lived at the corner of Valerie and Presidio for 39 years, and I am dead-set against this development and zoning change for several reasons. The main reason is building a 23-foot-high wall, then putting two-story condos on top of that will destroy the property values, lower the quality of life in everyone in our area. The plan to connect Presidio and Walnut will cut this development in half. It's been talked about that the seniors in this area will have to cross Presidio in order to get to all the amenities that they're paying for. It's also been stated about people speeding along Presidio, and straightening it out and connecting it to Presidio will only make things worse. And then seniors are going to have to try to cross this street in order to get to these amenities up a very steep driveway. This is very dangerous. The developer's plan for this is to try to find elderly that are willing to buy two-story condos they don't want, are willing to walk uphill and are across a dangerous street to get the facilities, or find people that don't want to use the facilities that they're paying to use. Turning Lemon into a cul-de-sac doesn't make much sense. Lemon is one of the few streets that are a straight drive from this area to Alamo. It also connects this area to senior citizen, the park, and the medical center. Closing Lemon from the 51 new condos and all the people using Lemon now will force all the traffic to wind through other streets instead of a straight drive down Lemon. There have been traffic studies that will say that this is going to raise the traffic from A to C, but this was done considering this was an elderly community and not a restricted-age community. Traffic during the last wildfire, the streets in our area were completely jammed with people trying to get out, and many, many more looky-loos. Closing off Lemon will only make this worse. This is very dangerous. I have heard the connecting Presidio to Walnut has been in the city plan for over 40 years, but nothing has been done about it, so it must not be that important. So keeping, but, but so is keeping the area zoned for low-density part of the city plan. Zoning under consideration, so the zone, zoning is under consideration, so not connecting Presidio and Walnut, and not turning Lemon into a cul-de-sac should also be considered. This development will destroy the privacy of everyone in the area, lower property values, and lower the quality of life for everyone in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Merchant, followed by Shannon Beeler.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the commissioners for the job that they do, and considering all these projects, it's a lot of work, I realize that. And I'd like to thank the builder for designing such a lovely building. I think it is something that will add to the beauty of the neighborhood. I think that people in Simi tend to be against building in general, and we have to progress with the times. There's a lot of elderly people in Simi Valley, and there's a real lack of housing for the elderly. I think we need that. This fits that need, and I think that if we don't progress, the state eventually would come in and make us progress. You know, we're just not building some of the things and fitting the needs of the community. I don't think it would decrease the value of property. I think it would probably increase property value. It's not a teen center, it's not a drug rehab center, it's not 400 units, it's 51 units. They're not, I mean, they're beautiful. I think it will enhance the area. I think it'll save the city money in that it is in the plan to make the street, Presidio, go through, and by having the builder be required to do this, they're saving the city money. They're doing our work. As far as Lemon Drive being a cul-de-sac, it's my understanding that that was promised to those people as well many years ago, and it's never been done. And again, that's going to be on the builder, and that'll be accomplished. So I'd like to thank the builder as well for designing something that's so lovely. And I think that there's a big desire for it. Having three units like this only in the city is just not good. We need more. And I think it's done in a positive way, so I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon Beeler, followed by Becky Savell.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. I have copies of a letter that I'd like--
Can you move that up for her, so that she can speak into the mic?
Thank you. Oh, I'm a little taller, maybe, than everybody.
No, no, you keep standing. Costs thousands of dollars so that you could--
That is cool. I'd like that so, in a lot of places at my house, actually.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm going to go ahead and read the letter that I'm submitting to, copies to all of you as well.
Laurie.
A person should have strong feelings about where they live. Your home is your sanctuary. You should feel strongly about it. My family moved to the neighborhood across the property that we're discussing 46 years ago. The undeveloped land was a selling point for my dad. The real estate agent assured my dad at the time that nothing would be built on that land due to the earthquake fault running through the property. When we originally learned about the plans to build on this property 10 years ago, we were told by Mr. Rovner's people there would be several single-family homes built. We felt sad, and quite frankly, we felt sick at the thought of losing the view and tranquility of our neighborhood. I remember many comments saying, "At least it's better than a bunch of apartments." And now the plan has changed to exactly that. As we scramble now to educate ourselves on density zones and the general plan, et cetera, we are taken by surprise by the denial of impact as stated in the mitigated negative declaration. Items such as the adverse effect on a scenic vista, substantial degradation of the existing visual character, quality of the site and its surroundings, and more are checked off as less-than-significant impact. I guess that depends on who you're asking. Personally, I would assign a significant impact to those issues. On page 16 of the mitigated negative declaration, it notes, or it mentions exposure, exposed sensitive receptors, meaning young children, the elderly, to substantial pollutant concentrations, and again, the less-than-significant-impact box is checked. When sewer lines were run up through our neighborhood, the ever-present dust in the air resulted in several trips to the doctor for my elderly mother for respiratory infections. The development could take two years or longer to finish. When it comes to her age and declining health, please do not tell me what can be deemed as less-than-significant impact. In addressing the need for senior housing in Simi Valley, there are many locations within the city that could stand some caring thought and action without continuing to build and creep into the hillsides that create this valley. I empathize with the residents of Wood Ranch. We share many of the same concerns, including but not limited to approval of a zone change. Mr. Rovner is requesting to make the leap from low-density over medium-density to moderate-density, which is inconsistent with the surrounding area and is one level below high-density. If this change is approved, I fear just as many Wood Ranch residents feared, that this will open the door to higher-density construction inconsistent with the surrounding area. The mayor pro tem was quoted in the paper as saying, "Open space is like gold." And the mayor is quoted as saying, "Agreed." I think many of us agree. Building on that land will forever change that landscape, and it never again will have the natural beauty that it does now. Thank you.
Becky Savell, followed by Bruce Meisner.
Thank you, gentlemen. I have some handouts as well. I think my sister did quite an eloquent job of voicing my opinions as well. Our family, as you know, has lived across the street from this development for 46 years, so I have seen every iteration of what has been proposed, the owners who have owned it, and the impact of that property without a development on it. The traffic will increase, the neighborhoods will be impacted by light, by the restricted view, and by the noise, and all of the other things that happen when you build a high-density development in a low-density neighborhood. Why do I say high-density? Because by definition, in the general plan of Simi Valley, a two-story townhome is high-density. I am so puzzled that this development continues to be put in front of the powers that be and the decision-makers of Simi Valley. As you can see from the map that I handed out to you, you've heard this before, and you've seen it before, but this is a map that shows that there is an earthquake fault that runs exactly through where that development would be placed. It has the dangers of liquefaction, of landslides, and let me break it down for you. I live there, and I've lived through many fires. What happens if you haven't driven by that area? I suggest that you do, so that you can see for yourself. Every year, the fires come through that valley, behind that piece of property, and up to the top of that hill. And that development, if it's to be built, will simply provide tinder for fires. The inevitability, and the liability, and the-- The inevitability and the liability and the risk to the people who potentially would live and buy in that development is something that I don't think the city of Simi Valley should take on. The risk and the liability to the neighborhoods that are adjacent to it from earthquakes and from potential destruction from fires is, once again, the liability and a risk that I don't think the city of Simi Valley should take. The floor of Simi Valley is littered with empty strip malls begging to be rehabilitated. They're located near transportation and to resources and services that seniors need. To me, we should focus on rehabilitating and elevating the quality of life in Simi Valley that we all moved here for, because I know many of you grew up here and have lived your entire lives here, just like our developer. This is just the wrong location. Additionally, when the sewers were put in 2008, why were sewers put through the entire neighborhood that our neighborhood feels that we've subsidized? The plan was never for a single home. It was always for a big development. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Meisner, to be followed by Joanne Meisner. I'm gonna have to talk to my shuffler, apparently. Did not do such a good job.
Do not want to speak.
Oh, very good, I see that.
Oppose to the project. We live in the Levan Heights area, which is right around the corner from the project.
Okay. All right. So it says Bruce Meisner does not wish to speak, is in opposition to the project, and then we have Joanne Meisner, who does not wish to speak, is in opposition to the project. Rick Shaw, to be followed by Vernon Gilvier.
Boy, I wish Mr. Rovner would have stuck to the single-family home he was gonna build. My name's Rick Shaw, longtime resident, forty years in Simi Valley. I love it. I moved into this area twenty-five years ago. This project is beautiful in the wrong area. I'm a senior, seventy years old. I'd love to live there, but I don't like it up above the house that I live in. I have a bedroom that has one window, and it looks right over that project. In the last few days, I made contact with ninety-seven of my neighbors walking through the North Hills community. Everyone was eager to sign a petition, which you have in a packet that I passed you through the planning. The petition is to oppose the zoning change in the construction of fifty-one townhomes on Walnut north of Lemon Drive. Most of the ninety-seven residents are unable to attend this meeting and wanted me to share their concerns over the zoning change with them. The petition said they were opposed to the zoning change only, to keep it simple. Their other concerns were loss of property value, not, that it's not in the best interest of the neighborhood, it's not compatible to the area, they're concerned about traffic, noise, encroachment on the hills. A change in the zoning will open up to more changes in zonings, noise echoing off the hillsides. They're concerned about the Santa Rosa-Simi Fault. The Simi, the Simi Valley promised never to build on active, on fault lines, overflow parking because of limited parking spaces in the new project, view of the hills replaced by a view of, and a woman said, "An ugly twenty-three-foot retaining wall, twenty-four two-story triplex and fourplex buildings, cutting down native trees, privacy issues." There is a need, there is no need for Lemon Drive to close. It is a connector road for evacuation to Lemon Park, which is an evacuation point, also the senior center and the civic center. The gifting of private property, Lemon Drive, to one property owner and the builder. The issues and impact report is incorrect. It's a high-fire zone. No study or report of what the sales market is for this project. What happened to the customs homes that were supposed to be built? The different prices in the sewers that the builder put in? There's, there's, people said that there was too great a number of people for such a small area. The question of control of sales to owners who turn it into rentals, that the city has no control over that. Who monitors the fifty-five and older capacity? They told me and talked to me about more conversations were given, more consideration was given to Owls.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. There are many concerns. I can't remember them all, but I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's good. All right, so Vernon Gilvier, followed by Russell Gaven.
Good evening. My name is Vernon Gilvier, and I've lived in, as most people I've heard from, I've lived there since nineteen-seventy-six, and I live right at the bend across the street from this project. And my house is sixteen or eighteen feet in a hole, and they're gonna build a twenty-three-foot retaining wall and then a two-story, first of all, the first building or the first part of the buildings is a single-story, and behind that, there's two, two-story, and then another single-story. So all these people are gonna be looking in my backyard. But most of the, my concerns have already been addressed in good measure by the people that have spoken before me. I have several concerns that may not have been addressed by anyone else because they only concern my situation, which is bad. Number one is a problem with the road that is the only way in or out of the project. That road lines up directly with the back of my house, and the headlights would shine right into my bedroom from that high. There is nothing in the way to prevent that. Number two, will the people who buy be made aware of the fault conditions? When I bought my house in nineteen-seventy-six, I was not told of the fault condition running through my backyard, which shows on the maps. If I was, if I was told, I wouldn't be here now. My pool cracked from end to end during the last earthquake, and I watched that hill behind my house throw up a cloud of dust about a hundred feet high as it jumped off the ground. There's also a concern for the amount of noise generated by a large swimming pool about a hundred and fifty feet from my backyard. Kids are loud, and the sound will be heard a long way away. All of the problems that have been addressed have been determined to be or have less-than-significant impact. How wonderful for the people that don't live there. Unless it impacts the person who determined that is affected by these decisions is really not relevant. She doesn't live there. I oppose this project.
Thank you. Russell Gaven, and then I have a card from Forrest Callahan, but it doesn't indicate if you wish to speak or not. Yes, no? Yes? Okay, very good. Mr. Gaven?
Good evening. I just have a few points. One of them is, it's always the big talk about that road. That Walnut Drive area, that has just always been a menace forever. People talked about all the accidents that have happened over there. It's all because of the hairpin turn that will be eliminated because of this project. I'm for this project, so, and then on the top where Presidio dead-ends, that has always been just a dumping ground, always. It's always full of trash and debris. I'm glad to finally see that area, be able to go through, be cleaned up, not have all those accidents on that street. So that's one major point that, you know, I'm happy for. I know one of the arguments with the people in the neighborhood that are right there, that they're concerned about traffic going through their neighborhood. I'm, I live in the Texas track now. They built a hundred-plus homes behind my neighborhood. That didn't create traffic through my neighborhood. Everybody takes Point A and Point B. They take all the main roads. They're gonna go up Tappo and down Yosemite, and the same thing. These people, the new track, the people are gonna go up Tappo Canyon, and they're gonna go down Sequoia. Those are the closest points. People are not gonna take their time and cut through neighborhoods, and I guess I'm more of a glass half-full type guy, 'cause we're talking about construction, and I look at it as job opportunities and income for the city, I guess. And so, and then even, you know, people talking about the, you know, why would somebody want to buy a two-story condo? Master bedrooms are all downstairs, so what's it, what's it matter on something like that? And then, well, the other point is, I've lived here since, for fifty years, and there's neighborhood after neighborhood after neighborhood, as they build new neighborhoods, they look into other neighborhoods. It's just the way it is. It's just, nothing we can do about that. We don't have any more flat land down below, and Simi Valley needs this complex, so I am for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Forrest Callahan, followed by Andrew Brody.
I have some written comments that I'd like to make to the Planning Commission. I did submit a written report to the Planning Commission earlier, but I just have a few things I'd like to say directly at the meeting. In nineteen-eighty-one, when my family moved into our home on Lemon Drive, we were informed of the city plan to connect Walnut and Presidio, and we were told that Lemon Drive would be finished off as the cul-de-sac that it was intended to be. Lemon Drive is a residential street, very much like the other side streets in the area. We have homes on both sides, we have children on both sides of the street. Lemon Drive was never intended to carry the volume of traffic that is currently burdened with, which has grown a lot in the last thirty-eight years. The curve where Walnut connects with Lemon Drive is poorly designed and dangerous. It is poorly lit at night, and for some reason, many drivers like to speed around the curve, which leads their cars out of control, and this is the site of numerous spin-outs, and we have witnessed many such accidents over the years. We have been waiting patiently for thirty-eight years for the city to move forward with the plan. Wisely, the city waited until they found a developer that was willing to fund the improvements called for in the city plan. Kingdom Builders is prepared to invest in the surrounding area, and it will bring tax revenue to the city and the schools in the community. We may prefer to see million-dollar homes scattered throughout the hillside, but the reality is that that's not the deal that's on the table, and it's not likely to happen anytime soon. If this development is not approved, it is likely to be years before another opportunity like this arises. Either way, someone will eventually pay to complete the city plan, but if this development is not approved, it may be the city with our tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Brody, followed by Joe Scavo. Mr. Scavo, it says, comment only. Do you wish to speak?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Brody?
Good evening. I'm Andy Brody. I'm owner of three-eight-zero-three Walnut Avenue. There's one property between our property and the proposed project, and that's three-seven-nine-nine Walnut. We bought our property in two thousand and five, and in two thousand and nine, my neighbor in his, going forward to develop his twelve acres, discovered with the trenching that there was an earthquake fault line. I've heard the developers mention fault zone, but my neighbor assured me that the fault line runs right through my property, as well as his, and his is adjacent to the project. I've tried to get the information, which is about a thousand-page book by the geologist that did that report with the city, but Planning would not provide that to me. They said it was work product. I think that's information that should be provided to the general public. Myself, I came out here forty, over forty years ago. I am also a real estate agent with Keller Williams, and I'm for development. It's my business. People need to upgrade, downsize, but it's gotta make sense. And this project is on the same side of the, north of Walnut, where our properties have one estate per acre. My neighbor, when he found out about the earthquake fault line, as well as the hillside ordinance, that limited the amount of properties that he was gonna be able to build, so it was not profitable for him. What I'm hearing here seems to be more about profitability for one particular investor than the lifestyle of the majority of the people in the area. My sister moved out here in the early seventies, and one of the things that attracted her here was the hillsides, and there was, ignorant from what it was way back then, but when the hillsides started to be built on, my sister and brother-in-law ended up moving out of the area. She's eighty years old, I have an eighty-five-year-old sister. They would now like to move back into the area. I agree, there's a need for senior housing, but I think you need to qualify that by saying affordable senior housing. The property that's on Tappo Canyon next to Coles, I believe it's eighteen-hundred and twenty-two-hundred per month. Neither of my sisters can afford that monthly rent. So to suggest that this is, this project is needed, I don't believe so. I oppose it. It doesn't make sense. If you're wanting, again, it seems like it's about putting as many properties on there to make it profitable for the owner. There's places like the Farmer's Building, the mall, there are proposed developments for that, as well as over where the Treehouse is on Alamo and Tappo, where they wanna be putting things in. It would make more sense to put senior housing in areas like that where it's closer to hospitals and other services.
Can you wrap it up?
Again, more, but I oppose, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Joe Scavo, to be followed by Sheila Kuntz.
Good evening. Thank you for this time. I would like to speak regarding the petition we sent you a few weeks ago from the residents of Valerie Avenue, Vicki Court, and Laura Street. We've been told the Simi Valley general plan calls for Presidio to connect with Walnut and for the abandonment of the roadway connecting Lemon to Walnut. If this happens, hundreds of cars will be rerouted, mostly or most likely up and down Valerie Avenue, because we're so close to Lemon, and Lemon's a very busy street, all the way down to Alamo. For this reason, we submitted our petition for a permanent vehicle barrier to be placed at Valerie Avenue and Presidio Drive. This vehicle barrier is consistent with the words and the intent of the Simi Valley general plan, chapter five, titled Mobility and Infrastructure. Neighborhood roadways are not meant to be through streets or links between higher-capacity roadways, such as Valerie Avenue between Presidio and Township. This area practice is found throughout Simi Valley, that is cul-de-sacs and blocking smaller roadways between big ones. Therefore, we are respectfully requesting the Planning Commission to add to any roadway changes a vehicle barrier at Valerie and Presidio. We are also asking the Planning Commission to consider the general plan and the regional traffic standards in deciding on this through-traffic barrier. Also, I'd like to add, we contacted Shay Johnson, Senior Fire Inspector for the County of Ventura. He sent me back an email, which I shared with Commissioner Castleberry. He said he saw no problem as long as Presidio connected with Walnut at Ditch Road. So that, that was, had to do with fire access to our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sheila Kuntz, to be followed by David Hardy. Actually, Mr. Hardy, it doesn't say if you wish to speak or not?
Yes.
You do, very good. Thank you.
I have all, I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of people in my, in the neighborhood. I'm gonna keep it short because I know a lot of people wanna talk, and I don't wanna say more things that have already been over, but I just wanna mention that twenty-three feet is higher than the ceiling, and I live on a dusty dirt road that goes along that building that they're gonna be doing, and I notice whenever it rains, there's a flooded mess that goes all over the top of Presidio, and it's, I don't know if that will be a problem, but it's a dirt road right next to it, that it's always a muddy mess there. Anyways, I'm gonna quit it short and let everybody else have something to say, and I'm gonna leave this with you.
Thank you. David Hardy, followed by Erwin Rosenberg. David Hardy, followed by Erwin Rosenberg.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm another one of those thirty-nine-year residents. I live on Reservoir Drive. And all the recent building we've had in Simi Valley always seems that traffic wants to go from Township to Reservoir to Alamo. So we have a whole lot more traffic. It used to be coming down my driveway. I'd wait for a horse or two to come by. Now it's four, or five, or six cars. But the most important thing to me is, on the project, is all the discussion we're having over the earthquake fault line. And the city's general plan, the environmental impact report, states there is a fault line. And not only that, it states that that land area up there could be susceptible to liquefaction. And that would be very serious. It seems to me that before you consider changing the density, you maybe ought to consider changing the general plan and actually coming up with what the real facts are with regard to earthquake fault. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Erwin Rosenberg, followed by Patrick Zerben. Patricia Zerben, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. I have to say, this is my first time ever in this council chamber after living in this city for about eleven and a half years. I'm new to the neighborhood. I bought a home there about a year and a half ago. One of the first things I did was go there at night, and I just heard all the wonderful wildlife. I saw the stars, looked up at the mountainside. And I said, here I am, sixty years old. I'm moving from my two-story townhome in the city of Simi Valley so that I can enjoy my retirement at sixty years old in an affordable home. I had no idea they were going to build condos or townhomes or what would appear to be like apartments across the street from my home. If I knew that, I wouldn't have bought a year and a half ago. So I'm new to this, yet I look around and I hear... And we talk about senior housing, a lack of senior housing. And I've met a lot of my neighbors, and I've heard a lot of my neighbors come up here tonight. And most of them are over sixty years old. Most of them have lived in this community for thirty and forty years. And they came here to make this their home, where they were going to retire. And yet, we want to destroy the wonderful beauty of that neighborhood by putting in this project. I learned tonight, which I didn't learn before, that the gentleman, which I totally favor. I've owned property. I've built property. It's in the private sector before I decided to go and live my dream and become a police officer and serve a community down in Los Angeles. Move away from the hustle and bustle. Move away from the traffic. Move away from apartments across the street from my beautiful $500,000 home. Because I wanted to live someplace where I could be around open space that, as someone said, was golden. I hear all this talk about less-than-significant. Seems to me, with all these folks that have come up here, this is very significant, what's being proposed to the area. This gentleman bought a piece of property, which I'd love to see him be able to develop and put his home on, like he intended to. That's what he bought it for. Now he sees an opportunity to make money. I don't fault anybody for that, but it shouldn't be on the backs of everybody else who lives in that community. It's going to be additional traffic. Worked in the transportation industry for twenty-eight years before I became a police officer. I know that people are going to need to come and visit. People are going to come there. There's going to be a lot more traffic and a lot more on-street parking. And it's going to impact the neighborhood. My twelve-year-old stepson's going to be at risk because cars are going to come traveling down our nice, quiet street. And they're not going to pay attention to kids out on the street playing. And a lot of my neighbors have children that play out there, or in fact, grandchildren. So that's a concern. There's no guarantee who these units will be resold to once they're bought initially. I've seen that happen in other communities. I served in Los Angeles as a commissioner when I was in the private sector. And I can tell you, you know what happens? These houses get sold. They get resold. And no longer are fifty-five-year-old people and older living in this place. We have multiple families living in these small dwellings. So we're going to bring more traffic to this community. And I'm sixty. I don't travel at a different time. I get up in the morning, I go to work. I come home from work. I go to the grocery market. All my neighbors do the same thing. There's a lot of traffic in that area. It's a major impact on the community environmentally. I like Commissioner Hodge, Mr. Chairman, that you brought up the fact of... That picture looks really good. But when is that picture? Twenty years down the road, when all those plants are going to develop? What are we going to look at now? A twenty-three-foot-high wall that doesn't have vining? That might end up being a graffiti wall? We have a lot of folks that come through that area, transient folks, that we have a problem with, that we've notified the county with regards to the flood channel that sometimes come in there and travel through there. Are we going to have a wall that's going to become an unsightly place? That where we have a difficulty already trying to get the flood control channel to be cleaned up, because the county's position is, unless it's offensive, they don't take it off. It doesn't come off. It stays. So we have to look at it. So there's a lot of things to be considered. This is, as someone said, not anything but very significant. This is not a less-than-significant project. This is a very significant project. I ask you... This is my retirement home. I hope that you will listen to the overwhelming majority and vote to not allow this project to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Zerben. And just for everybody's edification, after Ms. Zerben, there are three other cards. And then, at that point, we'll take a short break, and then come back and continue with the non... Well, some short public hearing items, and then... Anyway, we'll be progressing. So hang in there. We only have four more speakers. Ms. Zerben?
I am a resident of Lemon Heights. I've only lived there for twenty-six years. I do enjoy very much the quiet environment that we have. I am a widow. My home is my biggest single investment. And for the property values in my neighborhood to potentially be at risk because of a high-density project that's close by and the traffic in front of my house is a very significant impact to me personally. While I empathize with the people on Lemon Drive wanting a cul-de-sac to enjoy a more peaceful street environment, I don't know that pushing that traffic and another fifty-one high-density homes down those other residential streets is anything but a disaster for our area. If I lived on Lemon Drive and I was going to be permanently blocked off from the traffic increase, and not just from this project, but from all of the people that are going to use that as a thoroughfare, you know, to connect from Tappo Canyon and stuff, that project is situated in such a location that the residents are not going to backtrack to Tappo Canyon to get to the park. They're not even going to allow foot access. It's an active, over-fifty-five community. Everybody keeps saying retirement. I'm seeing a lot of gray hairs here. And we all drive. Everybody has their own car. We all walk in our neighborhoods and stuff. These residents won't even be able to have the ability to walk from their homes straight down Lemon Drive to get to the park, or the senior center, or Kaiser, or anything that would be in a walking distance for them. So I am very much opposed to the development as it stands. I empathize, again, with the builder, too. As an investor, I'm sure he wants to turn that into a profit, but not at my expense.
Thank you. Elaine Littster, followed by Leah Seguidi.
Seguidi.
Seguidi. Oh, sorry. Followed by Leah. Okay.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I actually am coming here... I don't live directly in that area, but I live, I'd say, within half a mile or within a mile south of it. But I'm really here because a dear friend of mine lives... Is probably next door to the gentleman who talked about his backyard being the entrance to the major portion of it. When I spoke with her and her husband, she lamented what a beautiful green hill she's enjoyed looking at and sorrowing that she would not see that anymore. It's interesting. I realize it's not a designated hillside performance standard area, but it's sure close, and it's certainly a green hill. If you read what a hillside... What the definition or the purpose of the hillside performance standards are, it says, "The city is situated among a series of major and minor hills. These hills constitute a significant natural topographical feature of the community because they are visible to all persons traveling the major highway arteries, as well as to citizens residing in and around the city. The purposes of the performance standards set forth in this article, therefore, are to implement those provisions of the general plan as they relate to the preservation of hillside areas, the promotion of single-family detached housing in hillside areas, the maintenance of open space, the retention of scenic and recreational resources of the city and to further enhance, et cetera, et cetera." So you know what it says. You wrote it. It's all in there. This complex, the Walnut Hill Senior Village, is a fifty-one-unit senior townhouse home complex. They're asking for a zoning change of low density, which, right now, would be a minimum lot size of 1.13 acres. If I understand it correctly, you'd be changing from eight homes that could be on the site to fifty-one homes. Now, I'm not here to say whether you should do it or not. I'm just wanting to be sure that we're very clear what we're asking. One of my... I actually drove there and stood on Presidio Drive, because I wanted to see... I understand the need to connect that road. It does make sense. I see why it's in the general plan. Of course, there's more than one way to accomplish that as far as connecting that road. My concern, though, specifically, if you decide to go forward with this, is my dear friends, the Pinkstons. And I'll be very honest. Because their backyard is right about where the driveway comes down, it will obviously bring about, I'd say, if there's forty units or forty-five units, it would be coming right into their backyard and the gentleman next to them. Currently, they have a chain-link fence. And so it would be very visible. But my question is, and this is for the developer, maybe for you to ask, if this is a cohesive-planned community, why do the driveways not align to each other? In other words, why the group that's down on the south side of Presidio Drive, why does that driveway not just go straight through so that they could take a car ride and go straight over and then go into the rest of the complex? Instead, the developer has chosen to design it in such a way that it's in the middle of the complex, and it comes into the backyard of other people. So I would suggest, first of all, research the possibility of connecting the driveways so that they don't have that adverse impact. Or secondly, if you're going to go with this design, then I would like you to ask the developer to put a nice block wall in the backyard, across the street, so that they are visually... So that they no longer have to deal with the cars coming south. I realize it's asking even more besides building the road, but I'm sure that the residents who live there would be happy for that being built for them as some kind of a retainer to mitigate against the lights that are coming through from that property. But I leave it in your capable hands to make a very difficult decision.
Thank you. Leah?
It was kind of fun watching you struggle through that.
It's the hardest one of the night.
It's my married name. It took me about a month to learn, so it's okay. No worries. I'm actually in support of this project.
How do you say it?
Seguidi.
There you go.
Seguidi. I'm in support of this project, and I have a unique perspective. My mother, about eight years ago, moved from Glendale up to Simi Valley. She needed to downsize. My father had passed away from esophagealoma. She was a widow. She had a 3,000-square-foot home that I grew up in, needed to downsize, didn't want landscaping, didn't want a hassle, wanted something smaller. She found the Wood Ranch condominium, which is where we live, which is what she was talking about. And I'm going to tell you, it's been a lifesaver. She wouldn't have moved up here, close to my house, if it wasn't for that condominium complex. She became my nanny. And now, because she was my nanny, I start up a small business, and it's very successful today. And I really have that to thank for what has happened to me today. But what I did want to say that was really important is that I'm there all the time, all the time. And when I go, there's plenty of parking. There's nobody there. There's nobody coming in and out and in and out constantly. And why? Because they're seniors. Their schedules are very different than the average person. And I don't see the traffic that they're talking about. And I'm there, literally, all the time. I'm probably the one that's there the most, just because, you know, sometimes I drop my kids off. It's really helpful. And third, but I do want to say, though, that if you do approve this, please, please, please push for solar panels, because we really, really, really need something like that here. So that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Robert Ruiz.
Good evening, gentlemen. And this lovely lady here. I've got deep roots here in Simi. My family has continuously lived in Simi for over 169 years. My grandfather, Pete Ruiz, sharecropped with Mr. Dohini. Yes, that Dohini of Beverly Hills. They had a home up at the top of Tappo Canyon, up above where Gillibrands is at. And so I'm from this pioneer family. I live in Thousand Oaks now. And I've got a good reason, because Simi, my heart is here. But I found an angel. I buried her. That's where she happened to live. So that's why I'm in Thousand Oaks. But I would love to come back to Simi. We had an incident in our family recently where someone way too young died. And what it makes you do is kind of look at where you're at, and hey, this happens to us, too. So I've been blessed with great genes. My mom lives at Ellie and First, backs up to the Wash. She's on an acre. She has eighty to 100 fruit trees. She has flowers. She has vegetables. Her dad died at 103. Her grandma was 104. My mom is going to easily pass then. And it'll be a good life, because you've got these great genes, and she's got a family that loves her. This year, I will celebrate my 50th high school reunion at Simi High. You know, we have a need for this type of housing. My wife and I have a unique business. We have a house and pet sitting business. So we stay in these fabulous homes all over Ventura County. We go to Rancho Cucamonga. We go to Las Vegas. We go to Arizona. But we also stay in places... We stay... We have a number of clients in Wood Ranch. And we're in condos. We're in townhouses and single-family homes. And you really see the difference. I was a landscape contractor for 25 years. And there's two things that catch your eye. Something that's pristine and right, and something that's off. This is spot-on. We have need for a project like this. This wasn't something like someone just flipped a coin and said, hey, let's build a project. No. There's been years and years that have been invested in the planning, the design. The project is beautiful. You know, you've got to tweak this. You've got to tweak that. And as far as the trees and the wall, being a landscaper for that long, it's not going to be a bare wall for the next 10, 15 years that someone's going to come and graffiti. And another note, as far as the graffiti, my brother worked for Public Works in Simi for 37 years. He's retired now. But you make that call. The graffiti hotline, they're there that day. That's their policy. You know, gets back to NIMBY, though. Not in my backyard. You know, the PD is familiar with the property. They're always going up there and taking kids that have gone around the fence. I'd just like to seriously ask you to consider this. I've got a 96-year-old aunt that lives on the corner of Flood and Lemon. And I asked her what she thought, and she said, you can't stop progress, and people need a place to live. So thank you.
Thank you. I have some additional cards of folks who don't wish to speak. We have Michelle LaPointe is in support of the project, does not wish to speak. We have Michelle LaPointe is in support of the project, does not wish to speak. Ivan Partita, or is it, I'm sorry, Juan Partita, is in support of the project and does not wish to speak. Andrew Skinner is in opposition to the project, does not wish to speak. Scott Safford is in opposition. I think you know he doesn't wish to speak. And we have Todd Edwards, who is also in opposition. Are there any other persons who wish to be heard? Okay. Seeing none, what we'll do is, we will not close the public hearing. At this point, there's some other matters to be done, but we will take a break. It's been 2 hours and 15 minutes, and then we'll reconvene in seven or eight minutes. Okay?[445.28]
Regarding statements made during the public hearing.
Yes, thank you Chairman Hodge. I do, I did listen to the audience and I was taking notes as they were speaking and so I do have a few comments. I want the audience to understand, as staff, we're recommending approval for this project and I want you to understand why. This property is designated in our general plan as, right now, for low-density residential development. It's not open space. It is intended to be developed. Back in 2013, this project went to the city council and the city council basically gave this a green light to pursue a general plan amendment to modify the thing, modify the land use designation. That gave them, there was initial comments, initial public testimony. I'm sure some of these concerns came up at that time, but I think that that time, the city council felt that this project was worth exploring. And so that's why, that's one of the reasons why we're here. We, as staff, I want to ensure people, there is, there is, you'll hear about a housing crisis. There is a large demand for housing to be built and where do you do it? Clearly, we typically do not put housing up in our hillsides. That's why we have a hillside performance standards. But we, the city rules do allow for this type of project in our hillside areas. And so that's, you know, one of the reasons we're recommending approval. It's the right type of project in an area that we, you would not normally see an apartment building anywhere or multifamily development anywhere in our hillsides. But there is a need for housing and there was one speaker who mentioned that if we, if we don't build housing, the state's going to make us do it. And there's a lot of truth in that statement. Right now, we have a very, we have a compliant housing element, but there's going to be a period of time here when the state of California is probably going to require us to find additional housing to put in the city and where do you do it? I can assure the public, I can assure the residents of Simi Valley that are concerned about the changing nature of Simi Valley, you know, what's it going to look like in 50 years? It's really going to look the way it looks today. A third of our city is open space and that's not going to change. Our third of our city is low-density, single-family residential homes that are already built and that's not going to change. So what we're going to find going forward are little spots of development. There was one speaker mentioned about, you know, what, can they just put, you know, the housing over in shopping centers that aren't being utilized? And that's part, that's part of the plan going forward. We are looking at that project, but just as many people don't want to see that project in those neighborhoods. So as a city planner, I have to balance and that's the challenge here. How do we find balance? You know, one of the things with our hillside performance standards is we're not putting a giant four-story apartment building here. It's a one-story that steps up to a two. And that's because we are trying to preserve some of the hillside views and perspectives. So we are trying to gently incorporate development into these hillside areas. And that's part of our HPS standards. This is one part of the process. We are, we're in here tonight talking about the planning issues. It goes from the planning commission and ultimately, this will have to go before the city council where all of this will be weighed again at another public hearing. If this project were to be ultimately approved, it doesn't stop there. It needs to go to building and safety for permits. Where all of these issues about fire safety, geotechnical safety, environmental mitigation impacts and, you know, the biology, the stormwater issues, all of these things are also further studied. There initially has been a lot of geotechnical studies to make sure these buildings aren't sitting directly on a fault line. There's going to be other further soil work that's done on this property. At the end of the day, whatever gets built here will be safe and, you know, structurally sound development being, being constructed and I want to ensure that. There was some questions about traffic and the alignment of driveways, the speed, the need for the street. Joining us tonight is our cities, the principal engineer that's responsible with traffic review and that's Justin Link. And if there's specific questions needed for Mr. Link tonight, we can have him come up to the dais and speak to those concerns. So those were some of my initial comments and unless Mr. Gibson had anything else to add, that's all that I wanted to.
If you can, if you could, yeah, keep your comments to things that were said by people, if you have any. No, that's fine. If we could have the traffic engineer come up, please? You heard some of the traffic questions that we asked before the opening of the public hearing. Do you, do you need to, those questions to be repeated?
Yes, please.
Okay. Commissioner Rice, I think that you had some specifically.
Let's see, what was the question? Could, one of the questions that was brought up was about the speed, how the, the speed limit's determined on that and also the number of stop signs maybe along that street?
We can tackle the speed limit first, Commissioner Rice. So in this situation, we wouldn't have a speed limit established unless we were going to use the existing speed surveys that were conducted on other locations. Since this is a brand-new road, there would be no speed limit established prior to that. We would look at design speed in the process of designing the roadway. So I know there are some notations on there that actually show 40 miles an hour and 440 feet.
Yeah.
The, assuming that we do have a speed limit that is consistent with the existing roadways, which is approximately 40 miles an hour, the site distance, the stopping site distance, which, I don't want to get this wrong, so this is out of the, the manual, so I'm answering a couple of questions here, so I apologize. The California Highway Design Manual, which is our standard of care that we use for design in these cases, the minimum, minimum acceptable is what we call stopping site distance. And that distance, well regardless, so the idea is that it is the minimum distance from whatever speed that you're assuming the vehicle is traveling at to see an object that is six inches in height required for that car to stop. So for, if we have 440 feet, that actually takes us to 50 miles per hour. So assuming that the speed limit on Presidio, the prevailing speed limit remains at 40 miles an hour, we have more than enough site distance to actually have a vehicle that is traveling at 40 miles an hour stop within the amount of site distance that is available.
Okay.
As, I'm sorry, your other question was about stop signs.
Well, the other one is, there doesn't seem to be many, I don't recall very many stop signs on that street to slow down traffic. So if we open, if the, the street gets opened all the way to Sequoia, how many, I don't think there are that many stop signs on that street. So wouldn't people be inclined to go over 40 miles an hour down that street?
It's a possibility. It's, drivers are, driver's comfort is what establishes the speed limit. So it would be whatever the cross-section of the roadway would, would lend to how they, they drive. Stop signs are, again, there is a process that we use to establish those and they would have to meet our warrants.
But the city would look into that.
But the city would look into that at the point at which the roadway was completed.
There was also, there were also some speakers who brought up putting in a barrier to prevent people from going down certain residential neighborhoods.
Correct.
Wouldn't that just force more cars down other neighborhoods? If we block off one, won't that just send more cars down other streets?
That is potentially a possibility.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Following up on, following up on that question, certain streets are good for cars to go down, certain streets are less good. The house, the streets that have more houses that front, where the driveways pull out onto a particular street are less good than those houses where the houses back up to a, to a street and there's a wall and there's no house and people pull out into a, the residential street and then turn onto a, a road that, that is controlled, that goes out onto the, for example, I believe that Lemon is a secondary collector.
Lemon would actually be considered a residential street unless you're, you're speaking about the section that connects between.
Are there any collectors that go between this particular project and Alamo?
Not until Presidio is completed and is connected to Walnut.
Okay.
So Walnut would be considered a collector. I'm sorry?
Help me out. What street would that be? Would that be on, actually, Presidio?
Yes, that's correct.
Would be the collector?
Would be the collector that would send everybody down to Sycamore.
No, we're talking about a collector that leads to an arterial. So the, the city's position is that by, by attaching Walnut to Presidio and detaching Lemon, that you will have cars directed more onto a street which is more appropriate for travel, or safer generally for travel, for those vehicles, correct?
That is correct, yes.
All right. Now, what's the distance, I was asking questions before about the distance on Presidio. Right now, it's a pretty windy street and I was surprised to learn that it's currently a 40, or is it a 40 or 45?
I believe it is posted 40. There are advisory speeds on that section of Walnut between Lemon, or the connector, if you will, between Lemon and, and Walnut.
And generally speaking, when you, when you straighten the road out, you would generally expect speeds to run the risk of speeds increasing?
There is potential for that to occur.
Okay. Have we evaluated whether or not with the curves that are going to be present, that are still present, that will be there even after this change in the roadway, whether or not we would have lines of sight that would be sufficient to stop in the manner that you just talked about?
As the roadway is designed, it is sufficient for a 40 mile an hour speed limit. That's, that's where we get to the design speed. That is what dictates the geometry of the roadway and the safety of the roadway.
So based upon, I mean, you've got all these things where somebody's traveling 40, they're going almost 60 feet per second, they need a second, .2 to 1.5 seconds to react, using the high, since we're talking about a six-inch item on the roadway, I'm sure we're looking at 1.5 seconds. So this vehicle is going 90 feet before the person ever even gets their foot on the brake and then, of course, you have to have the vehicle stop. It's sufficient with the curvatures of the roadway that we have now, correct?
Based on the manual and the minimum standard of care, correct.
And if you get up to 50, you've got a problem. Is that your, is that your estimate?
When you get up to 50, you are at the limit. If you go beyond 50, there would not be sufficient space to stop occurring, when an object occurs in the roadway.
Any other questions for the traffic engineer, Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes, I have two. So is there any possibility of putting a speed bump on to Presidio in order to slow down traffic if it does get up to that 50 mile per hour issue?
Unfortunately, no, because the width of the roadway, as it is designed and would be constructed, is wider than our standard, which is 40 feet.
All right. And then the other question I had, there is, at this time, no crosswalk across Presidio for?
At this time, no.
Okay. That's it for me.
So essentially, the traffic engineer, you'd know this better than I, there, in fact, are no, the places where the roadways, not the roadways, but rather the alleyways leave the project and onto Presidio, those don't qualify as unmarked crosswalks because they're not roadways.
Or, just to clarify, are we talking within the project site?
The project site out onto, onto Presidio.
Onto Presidio.
Those are not unmarked crosswalks. They're not marked crossboxes. There's marking, but they're also not unmarked crosswalks because you don't have T-intersection roadways or intersecting roadways.
It would depend on how the driveway is designed. If the driveway is designed as a public road intersection, then those would be unmarked crosswalks. I believe we have required them to construct a commercial driveway, if I'm not mistaken. In that case, it would not be an unmarked crosswalk.
So there would be no crosswalk?
Correct.
Unmarked or marked?
Correct.
Further questions, Commissioner Rice? I mean, Commissioner Mann?
For the traffic study, under the executive summary, there's a line that says, "Proposed project is expected to generate a net increase of four vehicle trips," but on the project trip generation chart, it shows a net change of 100 daily in trips. So is it four? Or obviously, I'm misreading something here. So under the.
Bear with me when I find, do you have a page that you can give me?
It's the second page of the traffic impact study. It's IV4. This was a traffic impact study from Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan.
Correct. That's, so that would be a net increase of four vehicle trips during the AM peak hour.
Okay, now go to page 18 and on their chart, they have project chip, project trip generation, daily trip ends, net change of 100.
That's for the daily trips. That is the number of trips that are expected to be generated over a 24-hour period. So if you look to the column to the right, it will show the AM, which should be four.
Okay. Thank you.
100 for a day? Had a 51 units?
Correct. That is the, the net trip generation above and beyond what has already been assumed in the general plan traffic model.
So how many, how many units were assumed in the general plan?
I believe it was eight dwelling units was what was assumed.
Which would probably be 80, would probably be 10, 10 trips per day for a standard house, about 80 trips, right? So what's the daily trip generation for senior housing?
Daily trip generation for senior housing is 3.44 dwelling, or trips per dwelling unit.
3.44?
3.44 is the average per dwelling unit.
Man. Okay. I'm not going to push your chops on that. If that's what it says, it's what it says. All right. Other questions to the traffic engineer?
Thanks for answering the question on the stopping.
Absolutely.
While we're sitting here.
All right.
Did we ever answer the, about, there was a woman who had the question about the line of sight from the, because of the wall turning on, I believe it was off ditch road?
Off of ditch?
Yeah. She was worried about the line of sight to make that turn off of ditch road. She's afraid the, the wall would impede her visibility onto Presidio.
Based on the site plan that was recently reviewed and the, what is to be constructed by the project on Presidio, at that, that triangular parcel that is, that we heard about earlier, I don't believe there would be an issue with line of sight if I can, I don't know if I have a mouse or, sorry, it's my first time.
Do you want a laser pointer?
No. Yeah, there you go. No, this won't show up on TV. So this section right here, this is actually what the proposed width of Presidio would be. So this, I believe, is existing ditch. This is an existing, or will be a future striped area. So the vehicle would stop here before entering into the stream of traffic. The wall would end here. So the sight line would be this direction. So I don't believe that the wall would be in the way.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any other comments by staff regarding statements that were made during the hearing? Would the applicant like to respond to any of the comments regarding statements made during the public hearing?
Yes.
How much time? All right. Five minutes? No, 10, but not, not 15. Ms. Gore.
I am going to take this. So some of this has been answered by, by staff that, for the earthquake faulting study, it has been, we, we just want to make it clear, and I'm sure everyone knows, it has been cleared by the city consultants. They were there every step of the way. And if anybody has any other further questions about the faulting study, we, we would welcome to answer those. Did anyone have any other questions for us on the faulting study?
Apparently not.
Okay. One thing came up about the sewers. We did put sewer in, I think it was 10 years ago. And while we were doing that, we gave people the opportunity. If, we asked them if they wanted us to put a lateral in for them. Some people said yes. Some people said no. And we put a lateral in for them, which they did pay us for, and hooked up then to the city sewer. They were all on septic prior to that. But somebody had, had said that they paid for me, I actually paid for the main line myself, ran it and did give people opportunity that we did put some laterals in for some people. So that was one question. One thing that we heard is that people will be looking into, from the property, will be looking into the neighbors and the way the property is situated. Maybe Gons, can you explain that maybe a little better, the way it's situated so that the windows, so nobody's facing that?
Yeah. And so the, that's why we picked the short side to orient that perpendicular to Presidio so that the massing would be a lot smaller and, and, you know, folks wouldn't be looking out their main living room spaces. They're going to be looking this way and into the courtyards. There are a couple small windows up here in this bedroom on the second floor that potentially could look out, but the units are much higher than, let's say, this home right here, which has sunk down just a little bit. So it's, you know, I don't think that they would be looking into anyone's backyard. The blue, the blue elements, those are the two-story elements. And so again, that's why we kind of put those towards the middle was so that, you know, we've got like a 20-foot setback, I think, from the top of the wall here to that building element and then about another, I believe it's a 36 feet or so to the two-story element. So again, you know, we were sensitive to that. We were trying to have that massing be pushed away from the street so it's not imposing on, on the neighbors.
So, and then the other part is that we had heard you guys talk about on the bottom units, how that, how are they going to get up to the pool and such like that. And we have been working on and we have a, we're formulating a plan to put more amenities on the below, on the below units, a, a hot tub, a pergola, and what else are we going to put? Barbecue. So we want that area to have its own amenities because we understand that the people are not going to be able to walk up there. They may want to drive up there and they'll have full use of the upper amenities, but we are, we have designed for more amenities on the lower side. So we want that part to be able to stand alone. And so that, we're, we are going to also include that in our plan. And that, those were the only rebuttals. Those were the only comments. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, if you, if you don't mind?
Absolutely.
Do you mind if, I, I want to ask you a couple of questions about your company. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
All right. You indicated earlier that you plan on building the project.
Yes.
I, I tried to do a little research on Kingdom, I'm sorry, Kingdom Builders, and I wasn't able to find any projects that you had built.
Yeah. So the name of our company is Mike Robner Construction Incorporated. You could look it up.
I did look that one up.
Yeah.
And what I found on your website was the only thing that was on the website, and perhaps I didn't spend enough time on it. I'm hoping that you can correct me if I'm wrong. But all I saw was renovation of large apartment buildings. I saw nothing about building individual buildings from the ground up.
Okay. So, and thank you for asking that. A lot of our, a lot of our projects that we do have large components on them that are brand-new construction, our company's niche is in large-scale renovations. But most of those renovations, though, like the ones we're doing in Marina Del Rey that you guys, that were on our website, are 50, 60 million dollar renovations that have been stripped down all the way to the studs and then, then they'll spend about $150,000 per unit putting them all back together. So also, most of my team is experienced in ground-up, ground-up construction. This is the niche that we're doing.
So this is your first one like this?
First that I'll build myself.
Yes.
This will be my first, first project of 51 units that I've built for myself. The other stuff that I've done have been for other owners.
Okay. Commissioner Rice, did you have some questions regarding 2012 general plan?
No, I think I know that, so I'm good.
Okay. Did, you bought this property in 2013?
2004.
2004?
Yeah.
Did you participate, did you seek to have this area rezoned in 2012 during the general plan update?
No.
No. At that time, were you still planning a single family home?
I wasn't planning, well, the economy had crashed. I didn't know what I was going to do. You know, like, we're, everyone's just trying to keep their head above water. I, I think about somewhere around May of 2012 is where I said, you know, I have this piece of property, maybe I should do something with it.
Okay.
I, I had no idea it would be 2019 and when I first started it, I was, no way I could live there, but coming up soon, I'll be able to live there. So.
All right. Any other questions, perhaps, of the applicant? Well, this gentleman?
No, I have two staff.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no further questions, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing. And Commissioner Castleberry, you have questions of staff?
Yes. So I have two questions of staff. Number one, is it correct there's no affordable housing provisions in this development?
That's correct. No affordable.
Okay. And my second question is, I heard conflicting information. Was Lemon Drive originally supposed to be a cul-de-sac in the general plan?
Lemon Drive is not a general plan designated roadway, so the general plan does not indicate the cul-de-sac.
Okay. Questions of staff?
Yes.
Question, Ben? I don't know why I want to call you Commissioner Rice.
That's okay. If we do the general plan amendment and then we do the zoning change, can the developer, in great intentions to go ahead and build this, then change his mind and try to max out whatever zoning he would be able to, or whatever he could build with a new zoning? And what would he be able to build if he maxes out the zoning change? Can he go above the 51 units? Can he totally scrap this plan and build a 100 unit? Or what would he be maxed out to build with the zoning change he's asking for?
I'll get that number for you right now.
Okay.
I think that number's in the staff report at 71.
That's, that's, sounds like the right, the right number.
72 senior units and 51 are proposed, but if he doesn't build senior, can he build non-senior apartments?
Well, if you can build up to 10 units per acre in moderate density and there's a little over seven, no, there's actually closer to eight, eight acres that are buildable. So assuming you could get the parking, aren't you looking closer to 80 units?
Well, under residential mod, he can actually says 5.1 to 10 units per acre.
But can't we put a condition on it?
No, you can't. Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. You, my understanding is, I talked to the city attorney about this earlier today, that once the zoning is there, if, for example, the, and, and look, you're sitting here, I understand these are none of your attentions, but, but we're talking hypotheticals here, okay? So don't get too upset. But if hypothetically, if the developer wanted to sell it to somebody else and that developer wanted to come forward, the zoning would be there. The only thing that we could have run with the land would be the, the age restriction. You could not have anything other than the, if you, if you rezone the parcel, you could stick in there a deed restriction, and it talks about it in the, in the staff report, for an age restriction. And that age restriction would run with the land. So one of the questions that was here earlier, somebody sells, somebody buys this and is age-restricted, can you sell it to somebody with, and they don't comply with the age restriction? My understanding is the answer is no. Is that accurate?
That's right.
All right. I don't know about renting, but at least selling, you can't do because the limitation would run with the land. But in, in response to Commissioner.
Mann.
Mann's?
Help you out.
Issues. Thank you, appreciate it. Colonel, I need it. If, if the developer backed out or just sold it, decided, you know, I'm, I'm going to go to Idaho, I don't know why, but it's cold. If they wanted to go to Idaho, then sell it to somebody else, the zoning doesn't change. It stands at moderate zoning. We can't condition the zoning. It doesn't revert back if they fail to build this project. Once the zoning is changed in terms of density, that's it. Is that accurate?
Chairman Hodge, I was not involved with the conversation you had with the city attorney.
That's, that's why I asked him. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. The answer is yes. So.
We have, we have, in recent cases, utilized our conditional zoning designation, which restricts the number of units and the type of units in our conditional zoning matrix. We did a, the USA Properties project on Sycamore, which we restricted it to 312 units with the senior. And also a small tenure project off of Byer Street Shopping Lane area.
Well, is that inconsistent with what I was told?
No. You were talking about the age restriction, which I said could, and you have to be careful here because a lot of that conversation was attorney-client privileges as well, but for purposes of the hearing. But Sean is saying is correct. We have done that in the past and you can actually restrict and condition the number of units. As long as that subsequent number is recorded and notice is provided to subsequent owners, they would be aware of that.
So we could, we could restrict the project of 51 units. We could convict, we could restrict it in terms of future development that it could not be built beyond 51 units. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
As well as the age restriction? Okay, I apologize for not, apparently, asking the question properly when I talked to you then. Okay. And is, was that included within the staff report?
The, the conditional zoning designation is not in the request at this point. To follow up with Commissioner Mann's questions, the number of units versus the age restriction and hillside performance standards, that could fluctuate from project to project. So I can't say we could always get 71 units or 72. There's, it's a complicated formula to determine if they could ever get more than 51 units. But there is a possibility could do a conditional zoning designation to restrict it to 51 senior units.
Okay. So if we do the general plan amendment and the zoning change, we can add in that the condition that he cannot build more than, sorry, he or whoever he sells it to, if he sells it, no more than 51 units?
Planning commission can make that recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions to staff?
Well, back to me then. So we, we may not be able to, I guess we can enforce the senior for sale, but for what Commissioner Hodge said. senior for sale, but for what Commissioner Hodge said, can we enforce the renter part of it, that they can only rent to somebody over 55? Would that be an HOA restriction? Would that be the restriction for the deed, for the owner of the property, that they would have to also rent it to 55 and over? Because I believe other complexes that are deemed senior complexes have that same restriction even for renting. So I think you can do it. I just don't know if it's a city function or if it's an HOA function, or if we can condition the future HOA to have that condition.
So condition 816 on page 55 is drafted, "In addition, the short-term rental of units are prohibited, and long-term rentals are restricted to the regulations under the senior housing project as defined by the same civil codes, which restrict it for senior housing to begin with." So whether it's rental or for sale, it would be restricted to senior, senior housing.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask you a fast question about, one of the general plan considerations was, and one of the findings within the staff report had to do with, generally speaking, or rather, it is, it is a goal of the city that as you rise in, it's nine o'clock, as the, as the, as the property rises in elevation, as the slope gets heavier or, or higher, that you want to have less homes. You want to have lower density as the slope rises. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's inaccurate.
And, and the, the, the staff justified that this meets that by saying that the majority of the parcel that's, that's, has a heavier slope is, is vacant or bare, and the project is, is set in the less steep slope areas. Accurate?
Yes.
Okay. My question is, is that really the consideration, though? Is, is it just the parcel that has to, that has to provide for that? Or is it really the general plan is talking about as you go further up the hillsides, you want to have lower and lower density, you want to have higher densities in the valley floor, less density as you begin to enter into the slope areas, even further less density as you get into the heavier sloped areas? Or is it just the individual parcel that has to meet that consideration?
No, it's, it's city general plan-wide. We're not, it's not parcel-specific. And, and we feel that a project of this type does meet that. It's still two-story, low-profile structure, similar to single-family dwellings. It's, it's not a three, four-story com, complex, as Mr. Paris was mentioning earlier.
I want to talk about height, I want to talk about density.
And density as well. Okay, it's the, the HPS further strengthens the ability for senior units within the HPS areas. This is a moderate-density proposal, which is no more than tenions per acre, which, 5.1 tenions per acre, which is a moderate zone, not a high-density zone. And, you know, there's, there's still opportunities in the HPS areas to go even higher. So we think this is a reasonable, reasonable request, and taken into account the single-family developments around it, and some nearby multifamily complexes that, these could be reasonable findings to accept, should you choose.
Other questions of staff? Okay. If there are no, if there are, are there any comments or questions from members of the planning commission? And I think, I would encourage us to pursue this comment section like this. Rather than putting our heels in and saying how we're going to vote, rather, but identify some of the positives, some of the negatives, if negatives are there. Have some conversation back and forth, and then at some point we'll get a little more, you know, go ahead and vote, and then move on. All right? Commissioner Castleberry would like to start?
All right. So first off, I'm happy to see the amount of engagement in this project. This is the first planning commission meeting since I've been on the commission where we actually have audience members, so that's exciting for me. I've given this project a lot of thought and careful consideration. I did go out of my way to meet with the, the citizens that had reached out to us to hear about their positions on this project, what they, what they believe is being as residents of this neighborhood. Our city is facing a housing crisis, and I think this project does fulfill a major need in terms of senior housing. My grandma is here in the city trying to find senior housing, she can't find it. It's something I hear more and more, that there just is not the senior housing in the city. I really think this is going to help our local homeowners' property values because this is a beautiful project. I mean, these are really beautiful units. And even more importantly, it does finish Presidio, which is going to save our city taxpayers money, something I always look for. It's well-designed with the right landscaping. I know it's going to take some time to grow in, but it's beautiful landscaping. I went through the plants, they're very, they're beautiful plants for the area. Again, it is very visually pleasing. And it does give the city genuine open space. It'll be maintained by the HOA up on the hillside. This is not open space, it's a vacant lot. And vacant lots, they attract crime, they attract drugs, they attract illegal dumping. So to see a vacant lot go away and be replaced with something beautiful is something positive for me. What is negative to me is the fact there is no affordable housing for our seniors. That is something we need to make sure that we're looking at going forward. I'm glad to see there are some green building elements, but I wish there was solar incorporated in this project. This is something that I'm keeping my eye out on, especially with new state mandates coming forward in 2020 for solar. The one thing is, I know the traffic study may not warrant the vehicle barrier on Valerie, but hearing the concerns, it's something I would look forward to exploring after the project. If this does become an issue, having the city explored doing a traffic barrier there, of course, as long as the fire department does approve, and it's not going to hamper our emergency response. And that's it for me.
Okay. Commissioner Rice, some thoughts that you have?
Well, you know, I, I really sympathize with the neighbors, because 51 units is a lot of units. I know down the street, there's, there's a project that has a lot of units. And I agree with Mr. Castleberry in the sense that, you know, with 51 units, not even one of them is low-income. I would think that would, I don't know, that seems odd. Usually we have at least one or two of them thrown in there, and it's something that we just don't have in the city. I mean, looking at the chart that we're going to talk about after, you know, most of these people leave, probably, there's these, a lot of zeros there because we just don't have anything in the last five years in some of these categories. And I don't know, I just see a problem with that. But I, I don't know, I, I think that, I agree in the sense of the, the vehicle barriers. I think that that shouldn't be something that, that holds us up tonight. I think that might be something for discussing in a future time, but I don't think that's really part of this project at the moment. I don't know. I'm also, one last thing. I am a little bit surprised, in fact, this is the first time I ever remember us talking, it, it says a lot to the architect that we've spent this whole time talking about the road and everything, and we haven't mentioned the design elements or anything on the building. That's just baffling to me, in eight years. Okay, all right, but we've yet to, I mean, it's just, that's never happened. So anyway, find that bizarre.
I, I'd like to step in a little bit on.
Go ahead.
You know, we do have this other item, which was in the, is it in the consent calendar?
Yeah.
It's in the consent calendar, it's the one that we passed on. And this has to do with the Simi Valley General Plan Annual Progress Report for Calendar Year 2018, and it talks about the Southern California Association of Governments', allocation of, of property, or rather, homes that the city in essence is burdened with, and our goal to, to meet these, et cetera. And although there are a number of places where we've fallen short, there's a very interesting portion on page four, and this is page four, final paragraph. And it says quite, quite clearly, you know, this is a report that the staff has recommended that we send on to the city council, the city council will send on to the state. "There is sufficiently appropriately zoned land to accommodate such development, to meet all of these economic issues." So there is other land within the city that would meet, so that we would be able to meet our goals with respect to the various homes and, and the price points and the needs of the city as sort of burdened by the Southern California Association of Governments. And so I see this particular project come before me, and I think to myself, okay, what does the general plan mean? What does zoning mean? We had a general plan amendment in 2012. In 2012, this developed, this, this landowner owned the property. He didn't step up and say, you know, we really, the highest best use for this property would be moderate density, so that we could get something done. He didn't do it. We, we did the general plan. Nobody else thought that this land should be rezoned to something else, and it wasn't. So my thinking is, is when you have zoning, you have an opportunity for people who do wish to build in the city, or businesses wish to come to the city, to know that if they build something somewhere, there's an expectation that the property around it is going to be X. So, or it'll be something. It'll be, it'll be what it's designated as. You can plan on that. And if you don't do that, if you don't provide people and opportunities, or businesses the opportunity to plan on these things, and if you take the approach that zoning means, this is the zoning unless a good project comes up. Well, then what the heck is a good project? I mean, that's not the standard. The standard is, for me, when you change zoning, is, is that you have to say that the neighborhood has to have changed in such a way that the character of the neighborhood has changed, so that you can have something to be, change this project that actually is more consistent with the way that the rest of the neighborhood has developed, or that there is such a compelling need in some other arena, such as housing, where you can sit back and say, well, we need to start taking a look and making some intelligent changes with respect to doing things such as creating overlay districts, so that you have something which is a single-family home on a street, that it becomes condominiums thereafter, et cetera, and that's how you, you handle some of these problems. But the standard can't be, for me, well, it's a good project. That's just not enough. And so I, I take back and I, and I start looking, listening, and I think, okay, demonstrate for me the empirical evidence. Don't just say we have a zoning, I mean, a housing problem. Just don't tell me we have a senior housing problem. I'll give you an example. At our last planning commission meeting, we approved a three-year extension for somebody to build their senior component to their project at Runkel Canyon, correct?
Mm-hmm.
The top of Sequoia. All right? And what was their reason for not having built that particular element? The, the market won't support it. And they, they can't, they don't think that they can build it, or haven't thought that they could build it. And so they haven't built it because the market doesn't support it. So, so what's going on? Either we have a problem with senior housing, or we don't, we have a problem with senior affordable housing, is what we have, not just, just senior housing. The people who spoke here tonight, mostly seniors. I live in an area that isn't senior housing. It's almost exclusively seniors. There hasn't been a Halloween trick-or-treater come by my house in five years. Okay? Because everybody's a senior that lives there, and it's nice and quiet, because they're condos, and people have doubt, have moved into these areas. My mother recently moved into one. She can see my kitchen, and she calls me sometimes and says, I could see your light was on. So, you know, she's 80 and her husband's 92, 85, and her husband's 92. There are places in Simi Valley for seniors to live. So to, to stand up and say, without any empiric evidence in the report, where's the study? Let's see it. Okay? I can't get behind a zone change because the project's nice-looking. I can't get behind a zone change because somebody empirically tells me that the cost of housing has gone up. This is going to be market-rate homes. So I just can't get behind a zone change without some empiric evidence in the staff report, and I'm finding it lacking. Now, the city council can make a policy decision based upon what they, they believe, whatever policy there is. We're the planning commission. We, we make decisions, I think, based on the zone, the general plan, the design guidelines, we're restricted. We can't say, I don't like that design guideline, we're just going to trash it. Eh, I don't like that, that general plan thing, but let's make it something different. Let's, unless there's evidence. We're being asked here to support something, and I think we're being to ask to support something without the empiric data in the report that would support these things. Now, you know, maybe it's a, maybe it's, there was a tremendous need, then why the heck didn't the nice folks up there at, who's it, Lennar that's building that project up there? Why haven't they built it?
Because they don't want to build those homes.
Well, maybe they don't. But if they could make a buck on it, they would, they would build it. Maybe they're telling the truth. The reason they haven't built it is because, you know, they want to get the single-family homes in first before they build. I don't know what it is, but they haven't. And we had to, you know, give them some heck, because we support senior housing, at least, I support senior housing, and I believe the rest of the commissioners support senior housing. But once again, it's like, I, I take a look at this, and I think to myself, the general plan means something. It has to mean something. The zoning issues have to mean something. Otherwise, if, if we're, if this is just willy-nilly, then, then you don't have rules. If you don't have, if you can't support your, the, the rules that are in place, then get rid of them. There's that big-box project over there where.
Yeah.
Bevmo is, et cetera. And I remember we were talking about, you know, changing the, the big-box thing from 10,000 feet to a smaller project, 7,000 square feet for Aldi, because that's all they wanted. And, and I remember Commissioner, who sat down at that end, said, there's been 26 amendments to this project, and not one of them's ever been declined. And I said, then get rid of the rule. If you don't have enforcement, you don't have a rule. Get rid of it. We're not going to get rid of zoning. So, and from my perspective, unless there's some data.
Can I?
That support, of course. So if there's some data that supports something, I have a difficult time getting behind it.
Just to respond to the zoning thing, the city council asked us, granted, it was a number of years ago, but they asked us to look into this, whether we should change the zoning. So that's why we're here.
Right. But a pre-screen is pre. It's, it's not.
True.
It's, it says it's something that they'd be willing to consider.
Right.
It's not, you know, and that was in 2013. Three of the council members that were on that council are gone. So we're not exactly sure what the others would say. Only two are still there. But they've asked us for our opinion, and my opinion is, is there's insufficient data to support a change in the zoning. And maybe the applicant can come up with that. Maybe they've got the studies, and they just didn't present them. I don't know. But, you know, this empiric data, or rather, this sort of bromide of, we need something when there's nothing in, in front of us, and you, we've got at least some anecdotal evidence of Lennar not building something, that maybe there isn't that kind of, you know, push for that kind of, of, the, the project that Ms. Pepio talked about, the first one, had a 9% turnover in one year. You know, in five years, that's a 45% turnover. That's kind of standard for, you know, a lot of neighborhoods. Maybe it's not, but you know what? We don't have the data. So it's just, look, this is just, I, I called for us to sort of talk about and air out thoughts and stuff. I haven't talked about any of the things like the, I have issues regarding this being in a fire zone. I have other issues regarding, et cetera, et cetera. We haven't talked about the design elements of the building, which frankly, I like. But the standard can't be like that, because then you have no standard. You have none. We had, we had a mayor here some years ago, and I remember coming down and speaking at the dais, from the, from the lectern, rather, on that side of the equation. And his answer was, I understand the general plan doesn't like it, and you can find things in the, in the general plan to support anything. I just think it's a good project. I'm thinking, how's the developer going to sit back and say, well, that guy thinks, he'll think our project is good. Is that the standard? Good, bad? That's not a standard. That's, that's anarchy. Commissioner Mann?
I stole my thunder. Oh. Turn the microphone. Okay, a question for staff. What are the three parcels under the tentative tract 5916? I'm assuming all those parcels are part of the general plan amendment and the zoning change. None of those can be rezoned or something else different. It just says three parcels. I'm assuming one is the open space, one may be the north-side Presidio, one may be the south-side of Presidio. I don't know what the three parcels are.
You actually answered your own question. The.
Oh, brilliant.
Parcel A is the third parcel. Lot one is the boundary of the north half, half of the tentative map. Presidio Drive is the public street, and lot, lot two is the Sutherland area.
I don't need to talk anymore. I can answer my own questions. So starting from the, the project itself, the PDS 1025, your architect did a wonderful job. We haven't, like you said, Commissioner Rice, we haven't even discussed that yet. Foresighted architecture, the project itself is absolutely stunning, beautiful. It's hard to believe in less than two months, I can actually buy in there to live. God, I'm getting old.
You're 54?
Yes.
Oh, my God.
I know. You think I was older, didn't you? Okay.
[laughing]
The general plan amendment, zoning change, even if we condition it that it's going to be limited to the 51 units, I kind of agree with, with Chairman Rice, Chairman Hodge, sure, I'm giving you a promotion.
[laughing]
That, and really, most of the people on the dais here, without an affordability part of it, it's, it's market value. And I'm not really sure if the rules have been in play for a while, and the rules were in play when you bought the property, the time to do a, of an amendment or general plan amendment may have sort of come and gone. So now you want to change the rules to make a profit. And again, I understand that, no problem whatsoever. But if we're going to change the rules, there has to be, like Commissioner Hodge was saying, some, some greater need, and I'm not sure if there is a greater need. Put an affordability part in there, possibly you'll get that part. I'm just not sure if the zoning change and the general plan amendment is, is really.
The, the public hearing is closed.
Yeah. Yeah, really justified. I mean, I empathize and sympathize with the homeowners for the construction, everything else. Progress is needed, and eventually something will be built. It's kind of our job to see what is the best project we could put on that. This is a very, very good project. But is it the ultimate end project? Is that the best we can do? I'm not sure if that is the best we can do. That's kind of my initial thoughts.
I'm curious what everybody else's thoughts are with respect to, if somebody came up with this zoning, if you took a look at the zoning map, nothing was built. Nothing was there. And you had this road, and everything around it was essentially low-density, and then you have this parcel 2. And parcel 2 is detached from parcel, I mean, would you allow-
Just the middle parcel section?
No, 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 the middle parcel, parcel 2. Parcel A is on the hillside. Parcel 1 is the larger section. Parcel 2 is the smaller section. Would anybody zone like that? Who would zone like that?
It's not, it's not really all that far out of character from, you know, within a two-block radius of that spot.
If you were, if this was a clean slate, you would, that whole section south of Presidio would be one thing. Now, I understand that that's not the way it is.
Yeah, I don't know about that. I don't know that that's current design thinking, but, you know-
Well, and the other-
Travis is the expert, not me.
One of the other things I'm pretty concerned about is the 23-foot-high wall. I realize it's not all 23 feet. If there's a downside to the way this thing was developed, it's the wall. I mean, I understand because it's sloped, you want to build it, you know, I don't know what the grading requirements are. You're going to pull a little bit down, you're going to put that in the front, you're going to build it up to level it out. It's kind of a shame. I mean, if it was single-family homes, you probably wouldn't have to do that, probably have to suffer through that. That really changes the character of the neighborhood. I'll say that, and I'll say it again. I wish this project like crazy was down on, you know, somewhere lower on the city. I think that it's actually quite nicely done. Probably, you know, it's larger than I thought it was. When I was first looking at it, I thought, you know, "These things are going to be 800 square feet. They're going to be like apartments." No, they're not. 900, 1300 to 1900, it's not bad. That's why they're going to be not cheap. But, you know, because we have the difficulty in building this kind of density in slopes of this style, you had to create this sort of leveling, which increased causes this 23 square foot. Perhaps that's another reason why it's not good to put it here. Any other thoughts? Anybody want to say anything?
I got, do more quick things. City staff somewhere. Rather than doing a life-size version of Frogger from the south Presidio to the north, is there a possibility to put a crosswalk in? A marked crosswalk? That's one of my concerns, obviously.
I would defer to our traffic expert, Justin.
Back up, Justin.
Mr. Link.
So, we'll reopen the public hearing for the purpose of answering this question.
Sorry.
Short answer is yes. If it met the conditions and that the city staff was confident that there wouldn't be any site distance issues that would create a hazard, undue hazard, yeah, we would entertain the idea of having a crosswalk there.
If it met the conditions, based on the layout as you see now, would it meet the general condition? I don't know if a crosswalk has to be so far away from a corner or whatnot, but to put one from the lower part of Number A across the street, somewhere on that road, you can put a crosswalk, realistically speaking?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. Since we're still in public hearing now, I got a question for whoever, does the city have a soils guy or an engineer that's here?
We have our Public Works Deputy Director.
This is going to be about the earthquake fault. We have different opinions as to, is there a fault? Is an act of fault, inactive fault? How close are they to a fault? What seems to be the city's consensus?
Well, as Brett Seamer, Deputy Director, Public Works, I manage the peer reviewers that have reviewed the work by the applicant's consultant. I would agree with the applicant's consultant that he has had two reviewers from the city consider his information, and he has identified a zone through the property that he feels that it warrants additional setback. He can do that. But as far as what we're looking at is that the ground in this area has been fractured over many, many years. The requirement that we have from the state is to identify anything that we know has faulted in the last 11,000 years. The difficulty is, well, back up, usually you can find dirt that is of that age or older. You show that it hasn't fractured, and it's kind of a layer on the cake, proves everything hasn't moved. In this case, a lot of that material has been disappeared because of land practices, agriculture. So it required a more intense investigative methods to evaluate whether those faults had moved. So that's a lot of the discussion. That's why some of the land on both sides has been concerned about, there's faults, is there not? But the consultant has done satisfactory work to show that any of the breaks in the ground that underlie this property are not active. So that is the key thing. They've, there's, we've got broken ground all over this area. What they've done is, through this area of development, he's shown that under the structures, there is nothing that is active. That would be the 11,000-year criteria that the state asks the city to guarantee before we allow construction.
What would, because I see, obviously, in a lot of the maps, there's fault zones. What is the setback required from, I guess, either, they're all inactive fault zones, I guess, or older than 11,000 years? Is it 25 feet, 50 feet? I've heard everything from that to 200 feet.
So, the setback would be a judgment that would be made by the geologist that would be peer-reviewed and found to be acceptable. If you are studying a fault and you've seen that it has only moved inches in its entire life, you may find that that needs a smaller setback. You look at the San Andreas that has moved 30 feet, they probably are telling you, "You must be a lot further from that." Secondly, you may find different types of faults that the main trace doesn't break, but something breaks next to it. Those are all the things that they have looked in. So you may have something as narrow as 25 feet. I've seen reports suggest up to 100 feet, depending on what is the nature of the fault that they've investigated. So that's why you get the ranges, is because of what you've found in the ground.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. One more, I'm not sure if you have to keep public hearing open or not. Parking. He's exceeding the minimum parking. Is that, if we approve the, all the way through, he can't change the parking to go back to what the city minimum is of one per? Because right now, he's doing 99, and the city only requires 51. So if we go through and approve all these numbers, he's locked in at the 99 parking spaces, correct? Or can he later come back and say, "You know what? I'm going to revamp this. I'm going to change it, and I'm going to go to the minimum parking spaces of whatever it is, 51."
Commissioner Mann, the applicant could apply for zoning administrative action at some point to remove some of the parking spaces. A remedy to that would, could be an additional condition that shall maintain 99 parking spaces on the site at minimum-
Okay.
-which would further secure it. And if he wanted to come back and reduce parking, then he'd have to come back and change the condition, which could require a higher-level modification, which could open up public hearings, either at staff level or all the way back to planning commission.
And obviously, one of the concerns were, where is everybody in parking? They don't want them in the neighborhood, so, okay. Thank you. Okay, I think I'm done.
Commissioner Rice, you have something else to ask?
Uh, no, I'd rather move on.
Okay. Just so everybody's super clear, I mean, there are certain findings that are in the staff report. The majority of them that speak to why the project should be approved are things such as, the project is going to meet the building code. The project is going to meet the hillside performance standards. The project is going to meet, et cetera. There's a lot of that. And I realize it needs to be in there, but as I was trying to be persuaded by why that compels, or rather, that argues for a change in the zoning, I was thinking to myself, "Wait a minute. Any project would have to do that. A single-family home would have to be built to, you know, development standards would have to be built to meet code, you know, building codes, would have to meet the hillside performance standards, would have to meet every single thing else that was in there." So I was unpersuaded by any of those, and I didn't consider them because I thought that although it does meet them, it doesn't mitigate, or rather, persuade me towards a zone change. Some of the problems that I had, and I did already bring up one issue that I could not agree with the finding, that this project reduces generally densities as you go higher up into the hillside. I think that, in fact, it's contrary to that, and it's the opposite of that. I was persuaded by some of the people who spoke, and also I drove up there a couple of different times and looked around, and I remember some other projects we had before us where people were talking about, I think it was even on Ditch Drive, where there was a fire, and these people couldn't get out, and the fire trucks came in and they got blocked in. It's a problem up there. The fire is a very serious issue. Most of these are going to be very active seniors, not all of them. And there's only one exit. I think there's an issue, a safety, a health and safety issue with respect to the fire issues. I think that the low density in the area is inconsistent with the moderate density that is proposed particularly by this project, and it would significantly change the character of the homes that are up there. So I find that that's inconsistent. I really don't like the retaining wall. I think that is another issue because of the characters of the slope that you've done this, and so it's a problem. I'm concerned about the safety issues with respect to traffic and speeding. I mean, I understand we had some discussion with respect of that. That concerns me. I don't like the split project. I think that that, I'm not going to say spot zoning, because I don't think it is spot zoning, but it looks like something that you just wouldn't normally do with good planning. And I also, I've already explained to death my feelings with respect to zone changes and, you know, why we have them, et cetera, and why you need to have some data before you do that kind of thing. I just don't think that it meets that. I find this project to not meet a lot of the findings that were in specifically the staff report. It met some of them, but all of the ones, the most of the ones that it met were just ones that every project would have to comply with. So I wasn't persuaded by those. Any comments before we push on?
Can we open up public hearing again? Sorry.
You have a specific question?
Yes.
All right, we're going to reopen the public hearing for Commissioner Mann's last question to staff.
Actually, not to staff, it's to the applicant.
Any objection? Very good.
Would you consider a... Sorry. Would you consider an affordable component to the project by a couple of the units? Well, let staff figure out exactly how that would work out. But I guess that's the ultimate question.
That's a-
I started to add, yes, we would consider it.
Okay.
Is that there? Okay, well, that was an easy question.
That is.
If, I don't know, my mom could move into one of them. That would be-
All right. Could be, yeah, that, all right, we're going to close the public hearing and limit questions to staff. All right, I think that changes some of the tenor of things, but it also changes the timeline. If staff could explain to us the timeline, we have the Affordable Housing Committee of the city council, I mean, it's a process. It's not something like where you go, "Well, okay, we'll make it affordable." It's a process. So, I mean, how much time would that process take?
The process could take some time. There's a requirement for them to prepare a senior affordable housing agreement and to put together this legal document, which assures a continued affordability and resale of those for sale units. And it goes through legal review, goes to the city's Affordable Housing Subcommittee through a public meeting. Then it would be, it would be brought back to the planning commission and go through the city council, like the rest of the project. And depending on the terms of the agreement, to prepare what sort of affordability provisions they want, what sort of incentives or concessions which are allowed through state density bonus law and some various other provisions, it could, it could alter the project.
I would add, Chairman Hodge, that what the planning commission is doing here tonight is making a recommendation to the city council. And as a condition of approval, you can include that as your recommendation. Then it's up to the city council to decide whether or not they want to agree with that condition. They could take it out. And if they were to keep it, then of course, they're the whole process of affordable housing would have to, you know, pursue thereafter. But that would probably be the process here. We kind of continue on from here to the city council and see if the applicant concurs and if the city council concurs.
Well, okay. So can we close the public hearing in total?
So you can close public hearing.
Very good. All right, the public hearing's closed. This is going to the city council, no matter what we do. We could go four, four-nothing, yes. We could go four-nothing, no. It goes to the city council. We're just making recommendations. You know, I'm a little wary of making recommendations on the fly where we don't know how many affordable units it would be, if he wants to change the project's result, if the state law, which would require only one, I mean, we don't know. I mean, we're getting so, I mean, this is just speculative. I'm a little concerned about that. And, you know, the city council can take a look at that. I don't know if staff has addressed that with the applicant in the past, or if the city Affordable Housing Subcommittee has opted out. I don't, I just don't know. And I think that we're, to recommend approval if you were otherwise not going to, I mean, I'm not going to change my way of thinking because of the maybe. I mean, or how that looks, and, oh my goodness, I mean, there are so many things that the state, the state, when you have affordable housing, the state law comes in, and it could really, you know, upset some applicants. So I'm a little concerned about that. Anyway. Shall we have a reading of the resolution? Well, actually, we don't have a resolution. Can we entertain a motion? By the way, you guys have been so incredibly patient and wonderfully, I mean, congratulations. I really, I've never been to a meeting like this where somebody wasn't shouting out or creating a problem or et cetera. And thank you very, very much for your politeness and your courtesies.
Yeah, on that same note, Chairperson Hodge, I just want to say that, you know, this is, this is democracy at its finest, and this is what I wish every planning commission was like, especially the ones when we deal with apartment complexes on Haywood or Patricia Street, you know?
And I don't like the word NIMBY because, just because you live there, doesn't mean that your opinion doesn't count. So I don't, I hear that and I think, "Wait a minute. If I live there, you should listen to me. If I don't live there, maybe I don't have the experience, et cetera." So I, anybody who said NIMBY to me, lost points. All right, can we, do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'm going to make a motion to continue to an uncertain date, because I'd like some more information on a affordable housing component.
I would second that motion.
There's been a, there's been- Very good. All right, there's been a motion by Commissioner Mann to continue the hearing to an uncertain date.
Chairman Hodge?
Yes.
We do have a date we could probably bring this back to. That way, for the audience members here, they can know what to look for.
Okay, what's the date?
March 27.
You can get this done in a month and a half?
Well, we'd like the direction from the commission. If we're going to continue it, it's not far, just so far, it's just that one item right there. I don't know if there's other things in that motion that you would like to include.
The motion I heard was to continue to a date, I mean, we could either be uncertain or we could pick a date, for the purposes of evaluating the project with an affordable component. And I've got a second from Commissioner Castleberry. So, Commissioner Mann, would you want to just make it uncertain, or do you want to make it the 27th? The what?
March 27.
March 27.
Well, I won't be here on March 27th, so it'll be kind of tough for me to do it. Do you have another date?
The next date thereafter would be April 3rd.
I would amend my motion, or I would amend my motion to be continued to April 3rd.
The date's earned to April 3rd.
I accept that amendment.
All right, there's been a motion made by Commissioner Mann to continue the hearing to April 3, 2019. The motion was seconded by, oh, for the purposes of evaluating, including evaluation of affordable component.
Right, you can ask the applicant if he's willing to agree to continue.
But you have to open the public testimony.
I'm going to open the public testimony for the purpose of asking a question of the applicant as to whether or not you would be willing to come back on April 3, or would you prefer us to make recommendation tonight? If you're unwilling, we'll go, you know, we'll see what happens.
I'll clarify with that.
Okay. Close the public hearing? Call for the vote. Matter will be continued to April 3, 2019. We do have some other business to complete. If those of you who are going to leave, if you could leave with, you know, you can talk outside. Once you get outside, we're going to see if we can't finish our meeting. Thank you very much, thank you very much for your time, your patience, your information.
Thank you, Greg.
And if, you know, I think we'll just take a big ditto for those of you who don't want to come back down. But, all right, let's push on. Let's go to the consent calendar.
I wasn't making the presentation unless you wanted me, want to pull it off consent.
Okay. No, I don't want to pull this off consent. Anybody object? So, anybody want to pull this off? Then the consent matter will be...
What do you say? Move forward?
Yeah, you can just, like, unless anyone objects, you can take a voice vote.
So, take a voice vote on the consent item? If we, all in favor? Commissioner Mann? Do you support the consent item? Yes? Yes, all right. I don't think we need to take anything other than a voice vote. Is that correct?
See, one second. I just had a quick question on the consent.
Go ahead.
When it comes to this table that we are supposed to meet, it looks to me like if things go the way they have been going, that in the next year, year and a half, we should meet a number of above moderate income units. Is there a penalty if we exceed that number?
If we exceed the number?
Yeah.
No.
Can we exceed the number?
Yes.
So, we can exceed the number, but there's no penalty?
Yeah, correct.
That's the target number they hope you will get to.
Yes.
So, the fear is, is that if we don't provide enough of these other units, that the state might step in and say, you have to do it?
Yeah. For Commissioner Rice's comments there, we're going to be going, we have our current housing element that's in effect, and that's going to be ending here. This fifth cycle is going to be ending here shortly, and we'll be initiating the sixth cycle in the next few years. And at that time, the state of California is going to be reassessing us numbers. And that's like we're talking, we're not building enough, you know, units, and we're going to have to dedicate more land for development. That's going to be probably the outcome for all the cities in California, not just Simi Valley.
Okay. That's it. Okay, may I have a motion for approval of consent calendar?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Castleberry. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion is made by Commissioner Castleberry, but the second by Commissioner Mann. Unless there are any objections, the consent calendar stands approved. We then move forward to oral communications and reports.
I believe you have the mobile home commission?
That's coming up. That's coming up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oral communications, yes, sir.
So, staff, anything for staff to report?
Yeah, a brief summary. This past Saturday, and if you're interested, the Bellwood School Homes that are located in the Texas tract, I think they were being referenced earlier tonight, the 48 homes that were, it was before the city planning commission, not too long ago. The model homes opened this past Saturday, and I think the planning commission will be quite proud of the work that they did on that project and what's eventually now getting constructed. The detailing, the foresighted architecture, all those elements have been carried out nicely.
The four-foot spaces between some of the sides of the wall and the fence.
Oh, your popouts, yes.
Yeah, well, there's some places there where there's like no place to put the trash, because the gate to get through there is too narrow, and the wall is about four feet away from the house, 16 feet, I assume, from the other house to make 20 feet. But I was very surprised to see some of that spacing. But anyway.
This past, or at the last city council meeting, we had two general plan pre-screening items that were referenced earlier tonight. One was, of course, the artist's assisted living facility, the memory care facility in Wood Ranch. That project was denied a general plan pre-screening request. And of course, the next one was the farmer's insurance building site, which was also heard that evening. And the city council did forward an approval for the applicant to pursue the general plan pre-screening request to change the designation from general commercial to mixed use. So, the applicant is proposing a mixed-use development on that very large site, and we'll see what they come back with.
Okay. Any commissioners with anything to report? Good. Mobile home rent mediation board?
We do have an item tonight.
I can't believe that.
This is the annual status report for 2018 that is being presented before the board this evening. There's five mobile home parks located in the city. The report before you tonight provides vacancy and rate, rent rate adjustments for each of the mobile home parks. The board received no formal requests for petitions for rent adjustment within 2018. For additional information, the city subsidizes mobile home rent for 16 seniors in the five mobile home parks, and the amount of the subsidy totals $12,400 per year, and the amount has not been changed for the past few years. It is recommended that the mobile home rent mediation board, by consensus, receive this mobile home parks' annual status report for 2018 and forward it to the city council.
Any objection?
No. No. I want to roll.
Commissioner King?
Hey, that's my line.
All right, that will be accepted. Tree advisory board?
Nothing tonight.
Adjournment, this concludes the meeting of February 6, 2019. The next scheduled meeting date will be?
February 20.
February 20, 2019. If I said 16, I probably was wrong. And the meeting is adjourned.
Gentlemen, good meeting. Good job.